Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is Independent School District 832. This is a regular school board meeting of the Mod Amedai School District, and it is June 22nd. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the class.
In the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of attendance.
Director Dolman. Director Payne. Director Donna.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Chair.
Here. Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
By Director Payne.
Second.
Second by Director Dolman. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Call vote, please.
Director Dolman.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Director Donna.
Aye.
Director Peterson.
Aye.
Chair. Aye. Motion carries.
Can I just say to those who are watching, the reason we have to do a roll call vote for everything is because we have one of our members remote, and so that's protocol we are required to do, in case you're wondering. Okay.
All right. Approval of the consent agenda.
Come.
By Director Regan.
Second.
Seconded by Director Dolman. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Director Dolman.
Aye.
Payne. Director Regan.
Aye.
Director Donna.
Aye.
Director Peterson.
Aye.
Chair.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, presentation, Safe Routes to School presentation. Kate Anderson.
Evening. Hi. Okay, perfect. Hello, everyone. We are here to talk about Safe Routes to School tonight. We have a presentation. This past year, we received a grant from the Minnesota Department of Ed to revise our previous 2015 Safe Routes to School plan, and we've been working since really last June, but hot and heavy.
For a moment, and just when you say "we," would you mind just introducing yourself? And who's with you?
Sure.
Just talk about, when you talk about "we."
Sure. When I say "we," I mean myself, Kate Anderson, Community Ed Director. We have Erin Roach with us this evening. She's probably one of the lead committee members. And then a part of the Safe Routes to School Committee is city officials, school district officials, principals. We have people from Washington County, Mod Amedai, City of Willerney, City, all of that. And we have parents, which are valuable for us, and other stakeholders, too. So, thanks, Barb. So this past year, we've been working to start a new plan, address different areas, or some areas we weren't able to get progress on in our previous plan. Erin tonight has a PowerPoint presentation, just to kind of share what we've been doing this past school year, and some upcoming things that we're working on to hopefully finalize our plan in the next couple of weeks. So, Erin?
Thank you, Kate. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here. Again, my name is Erin Roach. I'm a volunteer with the Safe Routes to School Initiative. I'm also a volunteer with the Mod Amedai Area Green Initiative, and I sit on the City Council Environmental Commission. And I have three children in Mod Amedai Public Schools, one of which is here with me tonight. His brothers have baseball, and I can't believe in more than one place at one time. So, as Kate said, we just wanted to provide a quick update on the status of our Safe Routes to School planning efforts. And, let's see if I click her here. There we go. Just to level set and provide a little bit of background, Safe Routes to School is a program sponsored by the Minnesota Department of Transportation. The goal is to make it safer, easier, more enjoyable for students and families to walk, bike, and roll to school and school facilities. This has really been a volunteer-driven effort, as Kate said, multi-partner collaborative effort over the past 11 months to update our Safe Routes to School plan. You know, with that goal of making it easier, more enjoyable for students and families to walk and bike, I think, you know, consider the added benefit of reduced traffic congestion around the schools, which is always a concern, and then the potential for reduced busing costs as well. And I'm, oh, I went too far. Okay, I'm here tonight to share with you that, you know, at this point in our planning process, we have a draft plan with recommendations available. As Kate said, this was work that we've done through funding to do the Safe Routes to School plan. We had a consultant partner facilitate this effort on our behalf. So, starting with a kickoff last summer, going through an extensive engagement period, some planning workshops, trying to get student, family, community input to get to where we are today with a draft plan. I'm looking to have that finalized, really, end of the month, and by next month or so. And I'll note that having an updated Safe Routes to School plan is really important in terms of funding. I know Mod Amedai Public Schools previously applied for some Safe Routes to School funding for infrastructure improvements with access to the high school and middle school, and some boost funds for some supplies for Safe Routes to School. And I think part of why those were denied at that time is because we did not have them referenced in our Safe Routes to School plan. The plan is really foundational to being able to access some of those funds. All right. And with those recommendations that I'll be sharing with you, I just want to highlight, you know, that those recommendations that I'll share represent extensive community input, you know, this extensive engagement effort, exhibit tables, workshops, student surveys, parent surveys, you can see. And then you can see all of the partners and different groups that have been involved in this effort, with Alta Planning and Design being the consulting agency that's been facilitating this on our behalf. So I think, you know, I have with me the draft plan with me here. It's a lengthy document. I think, you know, bottom line, this is not going to surprise anyone. Students and families want safe walking and biking paths, and they want safe crossings and intersections. And that's really what this plan boils down to. All right. And then just to highlight some of the recommendations for the Mod Amedai Public Schools, I'll note I've given this similar presentation to the Mod Amedai City Council, kind of highlighting recommendations that are pertinent to the city. We're working to get scheduled with the City of Grants. We've been in front of City of Willerney. So we're making the rounds, you know, sharing these recommendations. And I want to bring these four recommendations to your attention tonight. And the first one is really about continued Safe Routes to School leadership. And I want to thank Kate Anderson for her leadership with this program. I know she wears a lot of hats and has many duties, but she's really been a key partner in helping facilitate all of our efforts. And we'd like to see that, you know, continue now that we have a plan and need to move into implementation. Second, I want to, you know, highlight that really the recommendation for the Mod Amedai Public Schools to work with partners on collaborative infrastructure projects. So that's, you know, think about the roads, the sidewalks, facilities surrounding the school buildings and schools, you know, looking at opportunities for improvement. Third, on-campus infrastructure improvements, paths, sidewalks, you know, facilities for bikes, et cetera. And then finally, increase Safe Routes to School education and encouragement to make sure this information is available to families as they're considering, you know, how their kids might get to school, or T-ball, or different activities going on in the community. So I'll talk a little bit more in-depth about each one of those. And, you know, I'm not going to share all of the recommendations tonight, but, you know, highlight some that are a little bit more time-sensitive in terms of current work or priority. And the first one being Warner Avenue South, and then the second one being County Highway 12, which is also known as Stillwater Road, going, you know, in front of the high school, middle school, Wildwood. So Warner Avenue South, so this map is showing the different city boundaries. I think the big challenge with Warner Avenue South is that it's the city of Willerney, it's the city of Mod Amedai, and at the south end, it's the city of Pine Springs. And so, it becomes very difficult to get all of those partners together to talk about, how can we improve this road? And I think, you know, of all of the feedback that we got, you know, I just want to highlight, you know, the sentiment among parents and families that we want something to be improved here before it's too late. This is really like a longstanding need in the community. And with the facility improvements to OH Anderson, you know, I think all the more important to consider, you know, how do we make this route safe for students and families? And so what we're calling for here with regard to Warner Avenue South, I think the next step from our planning process is, you know, really continuing the discussion, bringing these partners together, and really proposing that we have a Warner Avenue South safety task force, so that we can get everyone together and move past, well, it's not my jurisdiction, I can't do anything, you know, let's get everyone together and make something happen. And then to continue on Warner Avenue South, just zooming in a little bit closer to OH Anderson Elementary, there are some plans, City of Mod Amedai projects that will be occurring, the 72nd Avenue South. So that's east-west, right north of OH Anderson. And then the City of Mod Amedai has also talked about some potential improvements right along the stretch in front of OH Anderson. So, just wanted to call your attention to, you know, these are on the City of Mod Amedai radar, and that South Warner Avenue Safety Task Force can, you know, then look northwards as well to continue improvement. All right. And then the second major area I wanted to highlight is County Highway 12. So this is a Washington County project, going from essentially the library in the west to, I believe it's Kimbrough Avenue in the east. And you can see, you know, this is, you can imagine this is St. Andrews, this is the gas station, the fire station, the high school, middle school, Wildwood Elementary. And so Washington County will be reconstructing that roadway. They're also putting in a trail connection, that red ideal avenue to the middle school entrance. And I just want to call your attention to the fact that Washington County is in the final stages of really, you know, finalizing their plans, design plans for this stretch. And we're asking you, as Mod Amedai Public Schools, to advocate for Safe Routes to School improvements. So, thinking about those enhanced crossings, you know, speed and traffic study, which would then lead to a potential school zone as well. And we know, I'll just highlight as well, we know there are a lot of residents that are on the south side of County Highway 12, and the new developments across from Wildwood, that are very concerned about, you know, accidents and being able to access the campuses and the sports facilities to the north. And then, kind of going into the next recommendation for the Mod Amedai Public Schools, is thinking about on-campus improvements and considering this, and maybe some long-term planning. I have three areas highlighted here. So the first one, a bike-walk route from County Highway 12 to the high school, middle school. So that's kind of the middle yellow circle. So thinking about Highway 12 into the middle school, high school campus. Right now, you can drive through there, but there's really no route for people on foot or bike to get in there. And that was the previous infrastructure project that was denied, because we did not have it in a Safe Routes to School plan. The next bullet here is the east-west bike-walk route to Wildwood. So, you know, there are kids coming to Wildwood for school or activities, or, you know, those fields there, on bike, on foot. There's no separated path for them at this point either. And then finally, consideration, this is the circle at the top left of the image, consideration of a path between the middle school, high school campus, and then 80th Street North. There is, I believe, some land there that the Mod Amedai Public Schools owns, so consideration of a path through there as well. And then, you know, that's really kind of all built environment, infrastructure. A big part of Safe Routes to School is also just education and encouragement and messaging to students and families about what this is all about. And, you know, I want to say that this doesn't all fall to the school district to necessarily do on their own. This is, you know, work that you can lean on volunteers and partners to help with. This is, as I said, a volunteer effort. So, just highlighting, you know, Safe Routes to School messaging and materials, and student and family handbooks, school orientations, et cetera. And then, I'll note as well, you know, these are really focused on access to schools and facilities. This is really part of a bigger effort that aligns with City of Mod Amedai comprehensive planning around safety improvements throughout the city. So it's just part of this larger effort as well. So again, you know, just as I close out, I'm just asking that you all advocate for and provide safe routes to students and their families to access school buildings and activities, and consider, you know, these recommendations in your planning and your work going forward. And I'll stop there and ask if there are questions.
Are there any questions? Director Payne.
Multiple cities, stakeholders. How did you access student voice? Was that through the buildings and the principals? Do you have students on your committees to help and support? And then think about those things. Is Kate your conduit to students? How are students engaged in this work?
So, in the initial process of finding committee members that wanted to volunteer, we did bring students in from OH and the middle school that were able to come in and share with our group their concerns about commuting, walk, bike, and rolling through the community. And so we were able to get some of that at that time, as well as when we had the open houses at the schools in August and September. We had a lot of input from them at, they were, the Safe Routes to School, well, actually Alta Consulting was at those open houses to get input from kids and talk to them, you know, why don't you ride, walk to school? We also have a group of students from OH Anderson who do the bike train through Catherine Abbott Park with a parent. And so we've gotten some information from them, too.
So, the reason I ask that question is when I looked at the list, I felt that was a voice that was missing, was the student voice. So it's good to hear that it's included in the work that you've been doing. Are there other voices, Erin or Kate, that you feel have been missing in the process, that you've had to go and purposely engage with? Or do you feel like all the voices are at the table in terms of making sure we have a complete and comprehensive plan?
That was, you know, a big point of the Safe Routes to School planning effort, was to make sure that we were being inclusive and considerate of the voices that, you know, we needed at the table to make sure that this was representative, and that, you know, we could, we could move past it just being a plan, and that we could transition into action and implementation as well.
I'm going to add one thing to that, Director Payne, is I think the one piece that we're, well, there's a couple, is the City of Grants. We've had a hard time getting someone to participate from that area. We're still working on it. We're trying to get to a city council meeting. And I'm sure they're open to having us come. We just haven't been able to get on the docket yet. And then the second one was, it's, we tried to get some of our FIED teachers into the mix, too, because we want to do some of the curriculum programming, to see if we can do that during some FIED time. Again, it's really hard with pulling them out and having them participate and stuff like that. So, those are just a couple of things. We did have a parent individual from the Lincoln Place Apartments who was able to join us, because we were concerned about the students getting across the street there. So, we got some feedback from that community also. So.
And I'll say, with the City of Grant, it's not, residents are very involved, families are very involved. I think it's city government that we're still trying to reach.
Well, I just want to add that it is a longstanding need. My kids walk to OH, and so I lived through this, and I advocated for the stripes on the street at least. And it's come a long ways. I was happy to see there's a sign now posting speed. I think, I really want to commend you for pulling, how much you've done. I know the challenge really lies with having different, so many different county, cities, and then the district to work with. And just, I think we encourage you, and however we can support you, I think we hope to see this really move forward. So thank you for all you're doing.
Thanks.
Superintendent report.
And I just grabbed the... Okay. So, I'm just going to do a quick update, share some things that have happened around the district since we were last together. Do just a brief strategic plan update, knowing that we are going to be talking about it in depth this evening. So, again, some brief legislative updates, and then the community engagement events that are upcoming. So, since we were last together, we did have graduation. We have a recent graduate in the audience. So thanks for coming. That's, that's kind of you to, yeah. Hey! Um, and we have a little, some stats about our students there. You also see pictures in here of that Wildwood Walk, that is always such a fun event. And there's a link to the graduation video, if anyone would like to watch it. We also had our Passages Transition Program graduates and our preschool graduates as well, since last week. We saw you, and I know that we had a number of you at those events as well. Oh, and just to highlight, actually, I'm going to go back to, this is our first year where we have two of our students from Passages who are going to be attending Bethel University next year as well. So, I'll highlight that. We have had a lot of success this spring in our State High School League sports. We had seven teams competing at State High School League state competitions. And we do have a state champion in Owen Carlson in the high jump this year, too. I don't know if you got to see it, when our Officer Deputy Olson was highlighted on WCCO for her Cap Kelly Likes Kindness. I think that's, is that what we call it? It's her special project to recognize kindness in the elementaries. And so, it was very fun to stand outside of OHA and wait for her to arrive with a number of students who were very excited to be on TV. And then the police car, they were late, and so that was a lot of energy out there, and for a long period of time, right then, right at the end of, or at the, right, was it the final day of school, or the second to last? It was near the end of school. So, just to add to that. Anyway, it's a fun, it's a fun little story. So I encourage you to watch it if you haven't. Since, again, since we last met at our study session, the planning team did meet on June 13th. And what you have tonight to consider is the results of the planning team's review of all the action teamwork, along with a number of updates to the, well, updates, the mission and objectives. But basically, you saw those at our last meeting. But on the 13th, they got to review all of it, and they are sending it along to you for approval for this evening, or action this evening. Legislative update, we did hear an update from MSBA, and it included a lot of policies that are going to need to be updated based on the legislative session. I will tell you, I was going to mention also, for Safe Routes to School, one of the things that came through is some additional education around biking. And so we always have the, I don't know, it's not a test, but students have, well, students have to pass a safety test for, to use, to ride the bus, transportation. Every year, we do this transportation assessment. But now there will be included safe walking, safe walking practices and safe biking. And that came through recently in legislation. And I know that one of our Safe Routes to School members was part of advocating for that. So, I will highlight that as well. And then just some upcoming community engagement opportunities, community education, Concert in the Park coming up, you're welcome, on July 12, 6 to 7, at Wedgewood Park. Anything else you want to mention about that? Just that it's coming. Don't forget. And an ice cream truck. Hey. That's all I have.
Mm-hmm. On your legislative slide, you referenced the MSBA webinar, but also MSBA puts out a really nice piece for board members, for our newer board members, that is very lengthy document, but not the 300 pages the bill is. But it's a condensed version, summary, and the impact to schools, that's on that MSBA website, which is a nice way for us to look more quickly at the rules, because much of what has changed is not our purview, it's managerial. So it's Barb's responsibility to implement that. But it's a nice overview for us, and I found that recently, and passed that on to folks as well. But if you can't find it, let me know, I'll send it to you. It's on the MSBA website. It's a nice summary document for new boards.
And MSBA did do, excuse me, I'm sorry. MSBA did do a presentation for us at, through AMSD in a partnership with a, well, no, MSBA also did one just recently. This past week, MSBA did a presentation, and it's a PowerPoint. But the PowerPoint itself is not super helpful, because it just kind of lists out the topics they're going to discuss. But I know that they did a video of it as well. And so, if I haven't shared that with you, I will, because that was a little more helpful. Nonetheless, I think I just would tell you that the big takeaway is that there's more to come. And as we, as those things come along, little by little, we'll share with you what the updates are as MDE and MSBA kind of wade through everything that's out there. So, thank you.
Yes. Oh, Director Regan.
So, not a question, just a comment, but I was able to attend the preschool graduation and the Passages graduation, and then our high school graduation. And wow, that is such an awesome experience to see all of that. First of all, the excitement from the preschoolers and their parents and families was contagious, and many of those parents were putting young ones up on their shoulders and just lots of excitement. So that was really fun to see. And then, and then the Passages graduation, it's so exciting and so wonderful to be able to see those students shine. It was just such an incredible event. And then I had the opportunity, when one of my own kids graduated from the high school this year. So it was a really emotional week to attend all of those and see all of that. So, we met last, I believe, on the study session, was the last day of school. And so I don't think we had a chance as a board to thank the teachers and the principals and administration and, you know, for all of their hard work this year, and just to wish the students well and the teachers well for the summer. Thanks for all that you do. And it just comes full circle on those events that last week, and I guess, end of May, early June, whatever that date was. Now, it's kind of a blur, because it was like two weeks ago. But that was, it's just really great to see all that come, come to. And we have this finish line, and so many cross that finish line. So thanks to all of the families and teachers and staff and everybody for making it a great school year. It was really fun to see. I don't know that I would say the word "normal," but a very different year than we've seen the last couple of years. So it was really great. So, not a question, just a comment. It's fun to see.
That's... Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Next, discussion information items. We'll start with the board member calendar. It's short, because it's summer. I do want to point out we have one meeting in July, and then two in August. And it's, I know people are traveling, and that's understandable. But if you are going to be missing, be really helpful to know, because we have a lot of, a lot of things that we want to be able to address while we have the time this summer. So, that's important.
Everything you can do to work around that August 10th would be. Everything you can do to work around that August 10th would be appreciated because we've been working so hard.
Time for us to have that time together. Okay. So that's all I have. Anybody want to point anything else out? Yes, Director Payne.
I can't hear anyone who's talking.
Is it better Paul if I get closer to the mic?
There you go. Thank you.
Yeah, I sit far away from the mic. I'm worse than you are, but lean back to my chair, I think. I'll pull the mic closer.
Thank you.
You know, I was mentioning that the MSBA summer seminar is on August 7th, that same week as our meeting on the 10th. It is focused on reading. Kim Gibbons is coming from Cary at the University of Minnesota. Cary has a very large role in a lot of the reading updates that'll happen this next year. And so she has a lot to share with us. There's other speakers as well, but it's a really nice time to connect with people from across the state as well to hear what other boards are doing and how they're implementing reading acts and things like that. So it's a really great opportunity for board members to meet others, to share work, to share ideas. But most importantly, it's a professional development for us, which is why we're here, is to learn more and do better for our students. And so it is focused on reading. I hope you can attend. Or you have to let Leslie know so she gets you registered. So check your calendars.
Thank you. Any other items to point out? Okay, next on the agenda is the second reading of policies.
And so as a reminder, these are just, are on our cycle, review cycle for us to just look and see if there are any updates. These are not based on updates. None of these had updates from the legislative session. They're just simply ones that we review periodically on a cycle. I haven't heard anything from you since we first talked about them. So I, unless there's something I should know, I think it's just up for a second reading.
Next on the agenda is the superintendent's evaluation summary. So I will be sharing that. At the June 8th, 2023 school board study session, the board discussed the self-reflection document and the board NDR review survey results. The board shared in conversation and in the board survey that Superintendent Duffrin has implemented the 2223 goals with respect to exceptional learning, exceptional learning experiences, engagement and long-term planning. Additionally, the board and superintendent Duffrin discussed specific areas of focus to further implement each of the goals. One of the identified 2022 and 2023 goals was to expand the exceptional, exceptional learning experiences for students. The board is pleased with the superintendent's implementation of the middle school schedule redesign and the ongoing implementation of the rigorous early literacy professional learning. The board would like to see the additional opportunities in the area of CTE and internships for high school students as it aligns to the strategic plan. The establishment of the teacher and learning newsletter is a first step toward better communication and regular reporting of data. The board hopes to see continued communication of the development of metrics on academic achievement that captures the progress of our students in a meaningful way. In the goal area of engagement, Superintendent Duffrin is successfully pursuing ways to provide engagement opportunities for parents, families and the community. The board would like to see engagement expand as a unified district-wide approach to partnership with parents and the Zephyr community. Additionally, Superintendent Duffrin has been instrumental in advocating for education bills on our school districts behalf. The final goal area of long-term planning encompasses the areas of finance, facilities and the district strategic plan. The development of the budget, the citizens' finance committee and communication on the budget are very good. The ongoing work of the district's strategic plan is moving in the right direction. More work needs to happen with the board to better measure and capture data that quantifies the district's exceptional learning opportunities and achievements. Super and therefore Superintendent Duffrin has met all the goals for the 22, 2022, 2023 school year. And the board looks forward to further development and advancement of the goals. Thank you. Thank you for all your work. So we're pleased to give that report. So, okay. Next is action items. Approval of donations, grants for May 2023 totaling $48,098.97. Do I have a motion? By Director Domon. Second by Director Peterson. All donations and grants are greatly appreciated. The use of these funds will be to further the mission of the school district and are used towards the direct, the wishes of the donor. Any discussion? All those, oh, please take roll call.
Director Domon. Director Payne.
Hi.
Regan.
Hi.
Director Donna.
Hi.
Director Peterson.
Hi.
Hi. That motion carries. Thank you. I'm thrown off by the roll call. Okay. Approval of the 2023, 2024 preliminary budget. Oh, where's our finance?
He's right there on screen. He's coming.
Oh, here he comes.
Comes on screen.
Director of Finance, Jeff Priest.
Jeff, can you see your presentation?
I can. Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Yeah. Board, we're asking you to approve the budget for the 2324 school year. You have seen, I think, most of the information behind these numbers at a couple of learning sessions. We spent a lot of time in May. Superintendent
Duffrin.
Pides you of, Pides you on some of the legislative changes earlier this month. So not a lot of change, not any change from, from that meeting in June when you saw this layout of budget revenue and expenses. We also had spent some time back in March with the finance advisory committee going through the budget. They endorsed the budget, but they did not see some of the, although we had some assumptions in place, most of them panned out with the final legislation, but there were some things that again changed with the final legislation that you were made aware of back in earlier this month. So just to point out there, the format here is, is the same format you'd see in the audit report. So it has the governmental funds, proprietary funds, trust funds that gives you total. So the general fund improvement there, little fund balance increase down at the bottom. I show the assigned balance as a percent of expense. We're projecting that to grow to 11.7, projected 630, 2024. So a little bit of improvement. And the boards, the board's minimum requirement for unassigned fund balance is 8%. So we're exceeding that assigned fund balance total. If we go back up to, it's one of, have you look at that building construction fund? That might be alarming where you see revenues of 4.2 million and expenses of 12.2. But that's just the, the timing of the, of that fund. So if we could do everything in, in one fiscal year, if we had sold bonds, say next year, received our insurance reimbursement next year, this would just look like total revenue would equal total expenses. Yeah, we would just see as we play out the project that that would go to, basically that fund should be at zero once we're done with the project. So what we're seeing there with that fund balance 63024 are some leftover funds from the OHA project. And we'll have those available to do future IAQ projects. Nothing identified at this point in time, but those funds will be utilized in that manner. I don't think, I do need to say, if we look down at the proprietary funds, I'm not sure I've ever mentioned this, but we've eliminated that deficit in the health insurance fund. So liability that had probably grown to about a million dollars has been totally funded. So we no longer have that fund. What we see now in the proprietary funds are just our internal service self-funded dental insurance. So overall, I guess you can say that school districts look at, look at fund balance as an indicator of financial health. And this, this budget here would, would indicate pretty financial, financially healthy picture. So any questions on any of those fund balances? Any numbers there?
I think because we've seen this a number of times, I don't see any questions. I cannot see Director Donna though. So Director Donna, if you have a question, please just speak up.
Questions at this point. Thank you.
Okay. So I think, um, Jeff, thank you so much.
I got to run through, I just have, I know I was, I think I was only supposed to have one, one slide, but just, I've got two more.
Oh, okay.
So in your packet and I'm not presenting is the, is the budget booklet that we put together. So if you're ever interested in, in doing some really good reading, you could go through that booklet. Here's some of the things that are contained within there. So we, we put the financial structure. So we talk about the different funds, the general fund. We, we have a number of pages with revenue assumptions, expenditure assumptions. And I'll just point out basic formula, 4% increase, which we had been planning on probably since March. And that's what happened with, with final legislation. So at the bottom, I don't think I mentioned this, but that Fund 20 is eliminated. Find that information on, on page. Okay, that's it for. Question?
Are there any questions?
Okay. So I'll just finish up here. So we asked the board to approve the budget and you're approving it at the fund balance level. So that's that first slide that you saw. So with the various funds, general fund, et cetera, through our trust fund. So you're approving at that level revenue expense. And then we're also asking you, just, it's a timing thing. We didn't know. So we're going to ask you to also revise the current year budget and only within Fund Six. You recall, we sold bonds a couple of months ago. We didn't know what that number was going to be until we had landed on an insurance settlement. And we did receive some fund, first installment of that settlement. So we want to recognize that as part of the current year budget. Our auditors like when the board has actually revised the budget and it's what we have in our financial system. So, so in addition to the next year, 2324, we're asking you to revise the current year just for Fund Six. That's it.
We need to do that as two different. No, you can go with one.
Are there any other questions or any question?
I have a, I have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Director Donna.
Jeff, thank you. Question for you. Is it, am I correct that the property taxes, the property tax revenue component of the budget actually went down a little over $300,000 from the previous fiscal year?
Yeah, that's correct. So it was about 10, and just Paul in the, within the general fund, it was 10.6, 10.6 for pay 21, am I going to get the right, the years right? And then, yeah, 10.3 in pay 22. Under that attributable to enrollment change.
Yeah. So I, I think it's worthy, certainly worthy to note that the general fund funds a majority of the operations and the property tax levy component, which the board has a say in, actually decreased.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep.
I don't see any other questions, Jeff. I just want to say thank you. We, you've presented to us many times, as you pointed out, we, none of this was new information, but we feel very confident that we're, we're moving in a good direction. So thank you for all the financial planning you've done and, and presenting the budget the way you do so that we really understand where we're at.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we, I need a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 preliminary budget.
They're moved.
Right, Director Donna.
Second.
Seconded by Director Domon. Roll call vote, please.
Director Domon.
Hi.
Hi. Regan.
Hi.
Donna.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Madam Chair.
Hi. Motion carries. Okay, approval of the long-term facilities maintenance plan.
Point of order.
Yes.
The motion I heard was that we were only doing the budget, so now we have to revise Fund Six. The motion that was made, I heard, maybe I heard incorrectly, was to approve the 2024 budget.
That's, you know what? I think it's true. And I know you said we didn't need to have two motions. I think it would be appropriate. So the, the second motion would be to approve the 2223 Fund Six as
Revisions, right.
The revisions.
As revised?
Yes, revised.
2223.
It's the 20, sorry, 2223 budget, Fund Six budget revisions. Is that right, Jeff?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
Good catch. Thank you. The auditors will appreciate that.
And I get a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 Fund Six budget revision.
So moved.
Direct, moved by Director Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Director Donna. Roll call vote, please.
Director Domon.
Hi.
Director Payne.
Hi.
Director Regan.
Hi.
Director Donna.
Hi.
Director Peterson.
Hi.
Madam Chair.
Hi. Motion carries. Now approval of long-term facilities maintenance plan.
Okay, there, there's Adam. So Adam, I'll just kind of introduce the topic here. So we are required, re- required each year to submit a 10-year plan to MDE. And what we're really looking for, we need your approval, but it's really looking at, we want to be able to participate in the levy cycle for the 2425 school year. So I think Adam also has a slide on, that's just going to look at those specifics for 2425. But what's maybe for new board members, you're approving a 10-year plan. We really are focusing on 2425 and you're doing this 10-year plan, but we'll be back next year to do another one. So it's, it's the way MD has us do this. It's not like, you know, that you can wait 10 more years before we come back and do this. It'll happen, it'll happen every year. So Adam, you want to talk a little bit about the specifics that's on, like on that other sheet? I think where we're looking at 2425, so.
I'm Adam Gemenin. I'm the Facility and Maintenance Manager for Monty Miede High School District. Like Jeff said, this is our, that's on the screen is our 10-year LTFM plan. But what we're focusing on and for this upcoming year is fiscal year 2425 in the LTFM plan. I did share this spreadsheet with the facility board two weeks ago at our meeting on what we are looking at for projects in, starting next July 1st. Now, it might be a little hard to see. We roughly have 1.5 million to work with on, on projects. Some of the main projects I want to highlight that we are going to be working on is OH Anderson window replacement, new flooring in OH Anderson Middle School and Wildwood. A good chunk of money set aside for HVAC repairs. The two that are highlighted there in that red color. Those are, are some roofing bonds that we have. The top one is our roofing bond from 2021 that's still in effect. And then the second one is the new roofing bond that we just took out for the, the roughs this year. And the stuff at the bottom is the health and safety expenditures for what we do during the year also. I, and just so you guys know, we, these are coming from that SiteLogic facility assessment we did a year ago. And we are continuing to work with them, going And we are continuing to work with them going forward. This roofing project freed up a lot of our long-term facility maintenance money. So we're going to be working with SiteLogic going forward on, on developing, developing a plan on using that money that was freed up.
As you mentioned, the Facilities Committee has reviewed this. Number of people here. All right. Ready to move for approval. Can I get a motion to approve the long-term facilities maintenance plan?
Moved.
By Director Domon?
Second.
Seconded by Director Peterson. Roll call vote, please.
Director Domon?
Aye.
Director Payne?
Aye.
Director Regan?
Aye.
Director Donna?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Chair?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next is approval of Intermediate District 916 LTFM.
Yeah, so same program that Adam just talked about, only this pertains to the intermediate school district. And as we are a member, they're looking for our approval so they can access, I think on, if I can see the bottom of that, I think they can access up to, I was going to say over $400,000. So they do that, they don't have levy authority. They have to access these funds through their member districts. And you can see it there, Montomede, our share is relatively small, 3.3% 3.33% of their total of that 431. So our share, this will come through on our pay 24, uh, pay 23 levy. Our share is the $14,000. So it, so we're just asking, so for our board's approval, so they can, and they're obviously doing this with their other member districts. So they can access those LTFM funds.
Are there any questions? Okay, I don't see any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moved for approval. The motion, I'll move for approval of the Intermediate District 916 LTFM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Domon. Roll call vote, please.
Director Domon?
Aye.
And I, Director Donna?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, I know my name is there and I am going to participate, but first, we're going to call Alice Seifert, our Director of Communications, and also the internal facilitator of our district strategic plan. So this marks the, I don't know, the end of a, a long few months of lots and lots of work on Alice's part. So thank you for that. It's also exciting time for us to be talking about the strategic plan this evening. And so I'm going to hand it off to Alice, who's going to, to take us through, through a number of slides before we have more in-depth discussion about the strategic plan. So welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So tonight I will do a little bit of a history. You have a printed terminology, which I think is helpful as we talk about different terms of our strategic plan. I'll talk about the school board role with our strategic plan. I'll overview the process that we undertook so that we started in January. And then I'm going to go through the strategic plan component. So really for, for us tonight, we're talking about the mission, the objectives, strategies, and result statements. A little bit of history of our district strategic plan and the update that we conducted this year. Our first strategic planning process took place during the 2018, 19 school year. And that's in 2019 was when our first strategic plan was established. We worked with the Cambrian Group in 2019, and we again worked with them in 2023 to facilitate our process. The Cambrian Group has worked with over 1,500 school districts over the last 40 years on strategic plans. Their process is very comprehensive. And one thing that's really great is the components build on each other through stakeholder engagement. So we started this update process in 2023 because of the accomplishments and progress that we made on that 2019 plan. And then this update process allows us to set new aspirations and actions. So as I mentioned, you have a printed terminology. If you want to reference that throughout the presentation, I won't go through all these terms, but I just, sometimes it's helpful to have that just as a, as a reference for you today. So the school board role of the strategic plan, I think there's the, the three pieces. Our school board members served on either the planning team or action teams. Throughout the process, they've received ongoing updates. So in the superintendent updates, they received updates as well as one-on-one meetings. The board received an update that I gave in January, on January 26th, after that first planning team meeting. And then we met and talked about the strategic plan at the study session on June 8th as well. And then ongoing feedback, I think it's important to know that ongoing feedback from our school board members was used to inform the process. And then tonight, we're asking for your action on the strategic plan package. Again, that's the mission, objectives, strategies, and result statements. Really what I wanted to just note here is that Dr. Gunn, who was our facilitator with the Cambrian Group, really helped us honor this process that they've used with so many school districts. But I would say our process was unique and they helped us really honor both of those pieces. So honor our unique community, but then also honor a process that, that they've used with so many different school districts. So our process, we had stakeholder groups called the planning team and then the action teams. One thing that I would just highlight is both of these groups have stakeholders who included family, staff, students, community members, as well as school board members. I think the one thing to think about is the planning team, they're really doing that aspirational work. So they identify our aspiration. So as I mentioned, they met in January, they met again in June, on June 13th, just last week. But also what I would mention is that there was a subcommittee of that group that met to revise the mission and objectives. And then the action teams, they really focus on the actions work. So think of their identifying the result statements and actionable steps we need to take as a district. And this, the, this group of stakeholders, they met over the course of three months, six different meetings. The first three meetings really were devoted to researching and diving into their strategy and the strategic plan. And then those last three meetings were, were really spent on writing what we call action plans, so focusing on the result statements. One thing that I wanted to mention about our process, first, I would like to say big thank you to all of our community members who participated because we did this process in 2019 and we had a significant jump in our participation. And one thing, I was a little bit worried this year because I wanted to make sure that we had good community engagement. But one thing that I had heard during our community engagement session this fall on connection and belonging was that getting volunteers and getting people to participate was really challenging post-COVID. And so thinking about that feedback that I got at that session and some of the things we heard, one of the things we heard was personal asks make a difference. So when someone reaches out and said, will you, will you do this? Someone's more likely to do that. So one of the things that I changed up how we, so we did our traditional communications tools. We use all of our normal resources. But one of the things, and you all saw this, was we did these postcards and they were personal ask postcards. And I sent these to all the planning team members. I sent it to our district leadership team and asked school board members and others to please do personal asks and ask people to participate. And I think that really made a difference because we had over 100 people sign up to participate in those action teams. So I just wanted to share that just because I think that there's different things that are happening that are informing and helping us do our work better. That was one community engagement event and kind of informing another engagement activity. Another piece that I would mention about our process, so I said it was unique, but it's, I think it's all, it was also really dynamic in that we were responsive to what our community needed and then, and changed as, you know, it wasn't a static process. We were responding as we went along. So just, you know, we talked about this at the study session, but just to reiterate, we did open up Google Forms and ask for action ideas for the action teams, clarifications. And then, so we asked for that feedback, how did we use it? So we use some of those ideas with our action teams. We use the feedback and gave that to a planning team subcommittee to make the work even better. So. So we talked about the mission at the study session. It's the declaration of our intent, and there's three parts to our mission, our identity, what we aspire to be. The second part is our purpose or why. And then the critical attributes, how are we going to do it, environments we must have to support the mission. So this language is different from that January 26th presentation that I gave the board, but is not different from our conversation on June 8th. And just to note that this is the mission that was adopted by our planning team and reflects that subcommittee work of our planning team. So objectives, objectives are the ways in which we measure, observe, and demonstrate the success and growth of our work on the strategic plan. We have five identified objectives, and the school board and district leadership team will use established indicators for the objectives and the timelines for reporting progress. I want to note also that these five objectives have changed since our conversation in January. This was work from our subcommittee of the planning team. The objectives have not changed since our conversation on June 8th and were adopted by the planning team last week. The next component are the strategies. So strategies are what help us accomplish our mission and objectives, and they answer how we'll get there. These strategies have not changed since our January conversation. But I just want to point out that action teams were built around these strategies and the action team work was to explore how to make the strategies operational. And then on the next slide, you'll see the result statements, which are the outcomes and achievements our stakeholders real, identified related to the strategies. So this is important to note that this is new information since our June 8th meeting. And what we'll do is I'll, I'll go through just a little bit more information and then you'll move to a discussion on these result statements. So the planning team met on June 13th and at the meeting, action team leaders presented the result statements and they also answered questions. As Superintendent Dufferin noted in her update, the planning team had a couple of different choices with regards to the result statement. So they looked at it as a package, but they did go one by one and decide on how to take action on those result statements. So there were edits made, there was movement of result statements, and there was consolidation of some of the result statements that were repetitive. And this chart does reflect what was the final adoption, or what the planning team, the edits, and what, how they wanted to set up the result statements. I want to give a big thank you. Over 100 stakeholders participated in our strategic planning process, and we want to thank them for their commitment and dedication to serving on the planning team or action teams. If the chair is willing, would it be okay if we asked our participants in the audience who served on action teams or the planning team to just stand to be recognized? Would that be okay with you?
Well, this will be fun. Okay. Say.
Cool audience.
Hey! Everyone who's here.
Thank you. I also want to thank our action team leaders. And they led the action team process and facilitated our community members through thoughtful research and writing. It was very challenging for them because every meeting, they might have different people come, they might have to start over from that last conversation. And so we just really want to thank them for sticking through that really difficult work. They also, I would really say that was a group that had to work through one of our priorities, which is balancing different viewpoints and honoring all voices and letting those voices into the conversation. And, and so I just want to really thank the action team leaders for doing that. I want to thank our community members who participated via email or Google Forms and in-person meetings because that feedback really did inform our process. And then finally, I would just say this is the largest engagement activity our district did this school year. And if you remember in October, I gave you an update on our engagement, and I said these were the three really big pillars or heart of our goals for engagement this year. And I think that it, it's helpful to look at some of those things that we set out. That's really what we were about with our engagement activities. And many of those things came through in the strategic planning process. So I just wanted to highlight that because I think that really came through in this, and we saw this as a big engagement activity with our community and just were really impressed with the experience, expertise, and voice that was shared in this process. So thank you.
Thank you. So the plan now is for us to kind of, to be able to go back and take some time to talk through. And I actually would like to just even just start with the, the mission and objectives and see if there's anything that anyone wanted to talk about. And then again, spend most of our time on the result statements. We have a number of people here in the audience who participated, as you saw, and a number of board members who also participated in the various groups. And so we have a lot of people who can answer questions and give input as we, we discuss this. So the next part of this, this agenda item is to really engage in some discussion. So first, looking at the strategic plan, mission, and objectives. Because we've already looked at that again in, on June 8th, I thought we could start there and see if there are any new questions or comments about the mission and objectives.
I have a question. I have two questions.
Director Donna? Go ahead.
Um, Al, thank you, Alice. Could you, for the benefit of folks that didn't have the benefit of participating in the process as much as some others have, could you perhaps just take a few minutes and explain the components of the mission statements? And then also contrast objectives with result statements. I think, because most, I think most folks that have been part of strategic plans, it's, they look quite differently than a public plan does. So if you could take just a few minutes and, and explain that, that I think that'd be helpful for some folks.
Okay, the first question was about the different components of our mission. So one thing that I would note, I think especially important from considering the update that we made from January to this June version was that, so we, we took several members of our planning team and made a subcommittee. We had a student, we had board member Donna and several teachers who did this work. I would say what they did with the mission was really focused on improving the clarity and intention of what we worked on with the mission. And so what I would say is there, there were themes that were coming through, but it wasn't clear enough for people what our intention was. So really that new version that came from this planning team, there is a few areas that, that they focused on academic achievement, personal success, leadership readiness for the world after high school and community building. So those are the really big areas that they went over. As far as that subcommittee process, what we did is we, we presented that, we took all of the feedback on Google Forms, the emails, everything that we had heard and said, these are the things that people are really resonating with, and these are the things that people are disconnecting with, or our intention is not clear. And so that's what the group did. So that's kind of a, a bigger overview of that, that process and what the improvements are. And then I would, I would say you can kind of see with these different, so there's three different components to our mission. And so that's where you'll see really where those improvements came from and are in those three. and are in those three areas of our mission. And then board member Donna's second question was related to the difference between objectives. So objectives, let's see, I'll go to that slide. But then we can have them out here so you can see. And I would say the best way to think about the difference with objectives and those result statements in the grid is the objectives are for our overall strategic plan. And so we're going to be working on how we measure it or how we observe it or demonstrate it as an overall plan, as this big package. And then the result statements are really like, I think for us to think about really how our community members felt in the spring of 2023, how they would operationalize our strategies. So the strategies that we gave them, they said, this is really how we think you need to make this work. And so that's, that's their impression of how to make those strategies a reality. And then there's also similar to an objective where we will work on, how do we measure all of those result statements? Are those result statements, did, you know, did we accomplish that? Is that ongoing work? What are the tools we use to measure or demonstrate success on those strategies?
And I also, I'll just add that objectives are really intended to be what we want to see for students as a result of going through our, our school system. Whereas the result statements are what are, what are the results we want to see based on what we do? So because of what we've done, because of the actions we've taken, this is what we would expect to see. And at the end, you're, and what Alice was saying is also true. It's at the end of all of this, where these are the outcomes you want to see for students, but there are more immediate results before that.
Just in addition to thinking about all of the result statements too, that part of the reason why we started this update process was because we had growth and accomplishments on those result area, those result statements areas in the last strategic plan. So that really will, the other piece of it is it will inform when the next update takes place.
And in both cases, to your point earlier, this is where we hear a lot about measurement too. The next step is for, as we work through this, is for us to establish what is it we want to see in terms of measurable goals based on underneath each of these. So as we take on, as we focus on a different, whatever result that we're focusing on or whatever action plan we start with, we'll be also be talking about what will our, what will success look like for us? And we get to determine those goals based on that.
Director Regan.
I just want to start by saying that I know there was a lot of community involved in this, a lot of educators, a lot of leaders, there was just a large variety of people who worked on this. So thanks for all of the time. I know that it was multiple meetings. I guess my take on some of the things, this, none of this is new to us. We've been all pretty deep in this since January. Couple of the things, some of my takeaways from the results statements in particular, if it's okay, time to do that or not.
Before we go to, to result statements, let's, let's, I would like the mission objectives again, because you've seen them before. I just want to know that we can, are we ready to move to the result statements?
Was there more to your questions? I do have a question about the objectives before we move to result statements.
I know my, my comments and questions are really about how those mesh together, but go ahead, I'll talk about the result statements later.
Okay, so I hesitated on whether to ask this question now or save it for the results statements. So Kelly, maybe we're on the same factor, I don't know. But Alice, my question is really around learner agency. It's something that has been brought up a lot and it seems like there's a lot of confusion in the community around what learner agency means. I've been fortunate enough to spend a lot of time with you folks over the past four or five months here and I understand it now and chalk it up to not living in this world or not understanding, but I finally got in there. My question is, was there ever any consideration given to defining learner agency? So as a community, we have a standard definition that we can continually point back to rather than debating what learner agency means every, it's honestly, it seems like every week we're having a discussion about it, or at least I'm having a discussion about it.
I guess what I would say first is that, so strategy, there's the strategy that focused on learner agency. And that was something that it took them three different meeting, you know, to do a lot of research on agency. And, and interesting enough, like I had talked to their team at one point saying, you know, what if we identified these three words? And they said that kind of held it back because it's, it's more than that. And I think that's what like our leadership team is, we're doing work now to really dig into it. But what I would say is that came through in the, in their action plan. So for us to use as we set, as a school board and the leadership team sets our annual goals, that's a suggested step for us is to develop definitions for agency and make sure its stakeholders understand it. And I would also say that that subcommittee who worked on that revised mission, that was something we talked a lot about and we talked about. We had, you know, we have some that don't understand it or then they do understand it and they really like it and they want us to keep using it. Our original mission did mention bold agents of learning. And then there was an adjustment to that and then it did go into our objectives. So there was a shift of that, the use of it and where, where it exists. But I would say it's, it was something that that strategy one spent a lot of time investigating and telling us, we have work to do to communicate and educate our stakeholders about what it is, agency is.
I'm hesitating just because I know this leads into the result statement piece of it as well.
Can I just interject real quick? So would you say based on that, to me, hearing that, I feel like it makes sense how it is in the objectives? My thought is there, I have more to say probably when we get to this, the, the result statement. So I guess my question is, are you good with it here the way it is?
Yes.
Director Peterson.
I'll stay with that for one second. So Alice, if you were put on the spot, what is the definition of bold learner agency?
I would let our superintendent speak to that. He really is. I would say she, she is supporting all of us in the leadership team to explore it and is leading us in our district, so I would ask her.
I think one of the, the short, so I'll give you a couple of things. One, I think one of the shortest ways to talk about it is the capacity and the propensity to take meaningful action would be a shortest, a short way. And then I'm going to expand on it. So capacity means you have the skills and abilities to take that meaningful action. And propensity is about having kind of the wherewithal, the under, the understanding that you really can do it, the mindset that you can do something. So it means, for example, that you're able to set goals and make meaningful progress towards those goals would be an example of something around learner agency. It means that you know what it is you're interested in and you know you want to, what you want to pursue. You have the, you have self-efficacy. You know that you can really accomplish something because you've worked through something that's challenging and you know how to get through it on, on your own. You know what it is, who you are as a learner. And so you know when you need help or when you're, you have strengths. And so it, there is a lot of research that backs up the idea that we want all students to have agency. And so, and it's not something that you're just born with. It's something you develop over time, which is why it's so important that we do it over time. It's not, you know, just go, go and make choices and it's, it's about building that up over time. One of the things that strategy one, that group ended up reading was something from, it was an international economic development, I think, paper. And they referred to, they talked about agency and they talked about it as oh, co-agency. And so that really resonated, especially with some of our parents of elementary students, because they understood when they heard the term co-agency, they started to understand, oh, this is something we work on together. So it isn't just go and, go and do, it's about working together and building capacity over time for students. So that's what I'd say.
Are there any other questions or concerns or thoughts on the missions and mission and objectives? Director Payne.
So my thoughts are, I appreciate the way that we leaned into our current strategic plan and superintendent goals and board goals to listen to the community and go back and make that revision. I know that's a process we didn't need to use last time because we didn't have the same response that we took the time to say, wait, we're hearing from community, we're, we're getting this feedback. We need to do something with it. And we took the time to dive deeply into that feedback, pull that planning team or subcommittee planning team back together to make these changes because I think it's made it better. So I appreciate the flexibility in your work to make it happen this way so we can end up with the best possible mission and, and objectives. I will say that you're never going to get 100% buy-in of a community, of a group of people on more than two or three words, right? And we've got a lot of words in this document. And we're always going to have those tension points, but those tension points, that conversation and that listening to each other and that collaboration make us better. So I appreciate the way we've leaned into that instead of scared, you know, backed away from it. But we've really leaned into the community input we're receiving in order to make it better. And I'm very happy with where we've landed. I was happy before, but now I'm even happier because we took the time to make those revisions. So I appreciate that.
Result statements. I'm sorry.
Director Regan. Now we're ready.
Okay, so I'll go back to where I started. I mean, I think that ultimately we have one job, one main job. And our job is prepare our kids for when they leave us, right? They come into our system as these littles and they leave as these big kids. But ultimately our job is to prepare them for the world. They're either going to work in or outside when they leave us, they're going to either go on to post-secondary or something else. And in order to do that, that's what I see in a lot of this. So I see a lot of different things. Now, what screams at me right away is on the upper left on the result statements, that we really want this all to be founded on a very solid academic foundation. We want them to have the best academic skills. We want them to be exposed to all of the content. We want them to have, you know, there's all sorts of things in here about academic, but that's not it. There's so much more than that. And so some of the things that I know that in, just in the line of work that I do, what we're hearing about the future of education and the future of the world's workforce is that employers aren't looking for the same skills they were 25 years ago. They're looking for kids to come out of school as good, critical thinkers, creators. We want them to be collaborators, we want them to be good communicators. So teaching students how to advocate for themselves, which is a part of agency, how to communicate, how to ask for the things that they need, how to have student voice, engaging in things like real world learning that makes that learning sticky. Things like under, I mean, so many of these things I'm just resonating with under the, what makes us a zephyr under the second strategy that the world is changing and that preparing our students for the diverse world that they're going to live into and work in. There's so many components in there to help us prepare our students for that world. And I guess I'm just kind of skimming over a couple of these things in here. But the other piece that really resonated with me is that staff and student wellbeing, because we need to make sure that our staff are in a place where they're, you know, supported and healthy and students as well, so that they're ready to learn and so they're ready to teach. And again, we have huge transitions. We have more transitions in some school districts. We have our kids transitioning twice in elementary school. And so that's being addressed in here as well. And lastly, you know, if we lean into all of these things, to me, this is a very holistic big picture of all of the skills that we want to see our kids when they leave our system and with high expectations. So to me, this is a very, this is, some school district strategic plans, which I've actually worked on multiple strategic plans in my career of almost 30 years in education, are kind of short sighted. This is not short sighted. This is a very holistic plan to encompass everything from those academic foundations to this. I don't know if you would call them soft skills, but the skills that students will need to be in a safe place, in a place where they are ready for learning and so that they're ready for the world that's changing. So I know that doesn't address all of these, but many of these pieces in here, I can't wait to see the ways it will measure them. I know that that's not what this is intended for. Like, how are we going to measure them? What are those action steps in place to make that happen? And I think that the measures of impact will be something that I think I'm really looking forward to what that looks like. So that's my gut feeling. But the one that screamed out at me was the foundation of, of all those academic areas is right there in the upper left corner. I don't know if that was intentional or not, but to me, that feels like we, that's where, that's most important and all the rest of these support that. So that's my two cents, kind of a long two cents, but sorry.
One second. So I, do we want to go through each of these and then just?
If that's, if that's the most, if that's the easiest way to go through it, whether it's going through, you know, box by box or, you know, just each strategy and, and picking out the result statements that you want to discuss? Because I don't, I don't know if you want to discuss them all. And, and some of these are, haven't changed since last you saw them and some of them have. And so I, I don't know. So I think it's a, I guess I'll leave it up to you how, the best way for us to go through it, but.
I would like to take that approach. Director Peterson, did you have something?
Oh, it was just about Kelly's upper left hand.
Okay. Okay, because I thought maybe let's start with that. So if you want to go ahead and then we'll start.
When this was given to us last Tuesday as a planning committee, strategy one people had listed it to read, systems that Modem ID schools exist to support a strong foundation in reading, writing and math for all, and science for all students. And then last week it was crossed out to academic and I.
Well, you were there, so that was during the planning team. So did you want to comment on that?
I, I did. I was in the group of leave it how it was because you're not going to learn music and social studies and science without math, reading and writing first. So I was, I was disappointed that changed because that's about foundational. And they wanted, you know, it got changed to include social studies and science and arts and music and all those other things. So I, the way they wrote it originally is how I felt was a much stronger action.
What are they called? Action plan.
Yep, that's why you have this terminology right there.
Director Delman.
Yeah, so since we're on that topic, you know, in the interest of respecting the significant work that the community put into these result statements, I wasn't part of the policy discussion or I'm, Jenny, I feel your pain. I wasn't part of the planning team discussion last week. What was the feedback for why the decision was made? I've heard anecdotally that the room was really split 50/50 on adopting the action team's language versus the language that's reflected now. So I'm trying to understand if there was a pretty even split in the room, why did we not default to the significant work that was done to come up with the original language?
I don't know that there was a 50. I'm going to look to other people, that doesn't sound familiar to me, 50. Okay, so I'll, I didn't look around the room and, and see 50/50. I just heard, and I was in the front row, so I don't know. Can, can you come and help? I, what I heard was agreement that there was conversation around it and then there was agreement, but I'm afraid I don't know about the 50/50. That doesn't.
Yeah, well, what I would share is, just for context for, for you to understand how the planning team moved forward, there weren't votes taken. So it would be very difficult to describe that as a 50/50. It's very possible people were having one-on-one conversations at tables, but as far as vocalizing to the large group, it was not made, that was not the impression that the room was split 50/50 as the facilitator there.
I guess I'll say that he asked the question, they had the, there was the conversation certainly about it. But then it was each time he does ask, do we have agreement? I mean, that's part of it is that we all, and once we had agreements, then it was moved on.
I would say context wise, I think that's also important for the, for what happened with that particular result statement is that was vocalized by our educators and that's where that came from, that that. that was vocalized by our educators and that's where that came from, that that edit be made.
Is it not possible to try to not to throw, make things difficult, but to say a strong academic foundation, particularly maths, reading and writing? And say, you know, try to reach, I'm trying to include it, everybody's, Director Regan. Oh, Director Donna, sorry.
I'd like to shed a little light on that. I was, I was able to be present for that presentation at the at the planning, that planning committee meeting. And I re, I remember when the question was asked as to if there was any consideration given to including other areas of academics in the definition. And the three action team leaders who I believe all have education backgrounds rigorously defended the rationale for for maintain, for keeping in or defining the foundation for which we build education as math, science, reading, and writing. And frankly, to use, you know, I heard that screamed off the page at me when I first read it. And I was disappointed after I returned and saw that it had, that it had been modified. So I'd really like us to, I'd really like us to consider defining the academic foundation as it was originally presented.
Director Regan.
So I'm going to push back on that a little bit as a social studies of many decades that, to me, all of those are equally important, teaching our students to become, you know, good citizens, teaching them, obviously, we use reading and writing in in all of those, in that content area as well. All of those are equal parts to me foundational knowledge to get students to be successful in K-12 education. I look at like, for example, a student is going to go into business in college. They need some intro to business and or social studies pieces as well. And so they're, they're utilizing, you know, it's either are you learning to read or reading to learn? And so building that foundation to me is all of those areas. And also a student who, it's not minimizing one over the other. It's not saying that math is less important or writing is less important. They're all very instrumental. I think that what I have seen in my time in education is social studies is not a tested area by the state like math and science is. And so what gets lost, what gets skipped? Kids don't get that experience. And I think all of those pieces are really important for students to have that academic foundation. So I wasn't at the, that meeting because that wasn't part of my role. I think this is more encompassing rather than less. I guess I don't see it as minimizing, Director Donna, but I, that's my interpretation of it. I believe it's all, not some.
Director Payne.
So because I noticed in the revision that that was something that changed, I was curious about the wording because words matter. And so when I look at the word academic and I think about the word academic, I think of it broader. And so when I look at academic, the terminology, it's relating to education and scholarship. And to me, that addition and focus on scholarship has more to do with critical thinking and going back to what was spoken to earlier at the table about preparing kids for things we don't know yet, right? And so by using the term academic, I think it allows all of our teachers in the district to have to see themselves in the plan. And every teacher in this district knows that the foundation of the work they're doing is based upon reading, right? They have to be able to read and read to learn. So all our teachers get that. And by making it more narrow, I feel we start to exclude, including excluding concepts of scholarship, critical thinking, which is part of what I hope we want to do. And not just think about only these four things, but think about a big, broad context to allow everyone into the plan so everyone can find their space in the plan to make a difference for students. So I tend to lean towards the term academic and then hope later as buildings make their plans, as individual teams of teachers make their plans and find their space in the plan, they then define it based upon the work they are doing with students. And those things then become the strength that comes from within the teachers and within the classrooms. But for our high level, I think academic is a better term for us, but that's my opinion.
I, I want to add one thing quickly that just occurred to me. Hearing the earlier description of mission and objectives, the objectives are for the students and what we want our students to achieve. And this is really for the, the staff and teachers, this, the, the result statements. I just want to point that out that, you know, it, this is for all of our teachers. So it's not, we're not talking about defining academic foundation for our, it's not, it's not the goal. I guess I'm trying to say it's the goal of the objectives. If we were saying, okay, you have to read to learn, then I would say that's more tied to students. But here, it's, we really do want academic excellence in all of our areas. So I'm, I'm not tied to one way or the other. I just would really like for everyone to feel like they're able to, they're, the way they, the way this is written conveys what they want to see in the, in the results. So I just wanted to point that out.
I just have one more. I guess this is a question now. So this, and then I'll, this, I'm done on this one, I think. But I, my question then is like, if it was written as academic foundation, then an individual school and or particular grade-level PLC team could, would, could or would potentially write a goal specific to math or a goal around literacy, something like that, right? But this is just encompassing really as an academic foundation. It's broader than that. Am I thinking of that correctly? Or am I asking that question that then a goal could be written in such a way as if it's as broad as it is? I don't know if I'm asking, I guess you, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I might need, I, you know, I, yes, yes, sir. I think, of course, goals can be written around each of these depending on what, what it is people are focused on. I, I'm not, I think the one thing to maybe, so I'm going to give two things to think about. One, when the group presented this, they talked about reading, writing, math, and science kind of being across curricular areas, that everything is builds from those four was the reason they talked about those four being the ones that they've listed. Secondly, I just mentioned that at another meeting, it was the last one, Dr. Reichel went through the curriculum review cycle and how it is she, I'm sorry, Director Donna, I'm not sure if I'm close enough. And how it is she goes through the different areas, different years, there's a different, there might be a different area that has more of the focus of teaching and learning. Obviously, next year and this year, we've started a lot with the science of reading and that continues for a while for us. But then the focus from the teaching and learning department might be greater in other areas also. And so I just mentioned all that because we're talking about the systems that exist in our school district to support that strong academic foundation. And our systems are currently highly focused on literacy, however, and will continue. You know, there'll always be some focus on literacy, but there'll be different emphasis at different times that are all academic. And so those, I guess those are the two kind of considerations is that big picture. We do have a system to look at all the academic areas. And then the other part of this is that that group wanted to emphasize that reading, writing, math, and science are the foundation underneath all of it. So I, in my mind, I don't know where you land on all of that and how you can word it, but I think both of them are going after academics, so.
Director Payne.
Our professional organization, MSBA, when we think about a district strategic plan, from that strategic plan down from there comes the superintendent goals and the school board goals. Does it make sense at this point to leave the strategic plan because it's the bigger, broader piece up here with the academic language? And then when we do the superintendent, the school board goals, focus in on those academic areas we want to start with in terms of our focus as a board, as a district, and and working without alignment. I mean, that's another way to think about it. This is not our only guiding document. We have other guiding documents that help us move the district in the direction we would like to move. And the broader term in this document seems to make sense. And as we work down into the two-to-three-year cycle, might be a more appropriate place for that more precise language, which is very important, but might have a better space there.
Thoughts?
I, I think that's a fair point when we talk about potentially defining a word that might have different meanings to different people. So potentially learner agency, although that's in the next box, so I don't want to get ahead of ourselves quite yet. But there are a lot of words in here which, or not a lot, there are a few words in here which could be politicized and misconstrued depending on how you interpret them. And I think that would be a great opportunity to do that in that type of setting. But my personal opinion is that we need to make sure that the wording is is appropriate in the result statements for me to feel comfortable approving this. And one last comment I wanted to make, kind of prior, prior to getting into all the result statements. And Barb, thank you for being patient with me and talking with me a lot this week. We, we talked through a lot of the action steps, the different strategies. And that was really helpful to understand the intent behind the result statements because the result statements are not necessarily ambiguous, but they're open to interpretation certainly. So understanding the action team's intent and kind of spirit of what they were trying to achieve was really important. And the action steps actually do kind of shed some light there. And in the strategic plan terminology that was shared, I mean, it clearly calls out that the district leadership team will consult the plans when setting the annual goals, right? So like, making sure that we as a board have an opportunity to understand what the suggested action steps are, I think is really important. And so when I look at this first box that we're still discussing, like the intent, and Barb, you called it out, I'm sorry, Superintendent Dufferin, I'm really bad at that.
It's okay, sorry.
My takeaway was the intent really was to have that foundation called out of reading, writing, math, and science. And if we change it to academic, that diminishes the intent and the spirit of what they were getting at. And I would just like to go on record as stating that I would, would feel much more comfortable wording for the original language and I'll leave it at that.
I'd like to just add that while this has come to us in a very put-together form, this is our opportunity to have some voice into it as well. So I, you know, I'm, I'm trying to, like I said, I'm really not tied one way or the other on this one. But I feel that there are some strong feelings on this. So I'm, I'm looking to see if there's a way we can accommodate it both by keeping academic foundation and somehow also calling out reading, writing, math, and science. It's, I think, I, I don't know where people are on that, but
Let's do it your way.
Well, I don't, I don't have wording. Director Payne. Oh, Director Delman.
Well, I was gonna maybe, and I've never done this before, so I don't know if this is how it works. But I would, I guess, raise a motion to amend the language to return to the original language, which incorporates reading, writing, math, and science as the foundation.
Okay, so right now, we're just in, we're discussing it. So but, but if that's something, I mean, I think if that's, that's certainly, yes, you can do that after there's a, a motion on the table of the underlying that you've been making amendment to.
Did you just make a motion?
Because there's nothing to make a motion to. Director Payne.
I'm just still thinking through, it's a plan, right? It's what we hope to do. We can change the plan. And so if we go with one set of language, the other set of language, we can come back into the plan at any point in time and change the language to either direction, right? So I'm not going to live or die on this, you know, language in this box. There are other ideas that are much more important and bigger to me. I would just hope that, you know, as we think about, Senator brought up, the purpose of the result statements are tied to
The work that we do.
The work that we do, meaning we as school board, we as teachers, we, who is the we?
Yes, I mean, so it's, I mean, it's the system. It's, it's what we're doing for students.
Right.
May I make a recommendation at this point? So it sounds like there's, there's, there's enough, there's enough behind the reading, writing, math, and science and calling that out. And I see at the end, at the bottom here of the same strategy, we have all students at Bonneville Public Schools experience a rigorous curriculum that I think could really, that has rich with diverse perspectives at all grade levels, which I think can speak to a little bit broader, the broader academic picture that we're talking about. So if you were to look at both of those at the same time and just kind of think of them maybe a little bit together, is there a way to see? I don't know, that rigorous, the, the rigorous curriculum, the critical thinking that you're thinking about? Can we see it? Can we see it if we combine the two?
Are you asking to combine the two boxes?
Look at them to get at the same time and say, are we covering everything that we're talking about in terms of having a challenging academic foundation for all students and all content areas and still be able to call out reading, writing, math, and science if people feel strongly about that? And then also recognize that we have some, I don't know.
Barb, the way, when you say it that way, they are redundant. I've never looked at it that way. So if we go back to the original specific one and then that other one at the bottom is more all-encompassing.
Does that feel okay to everyone? No, 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 no. Together, together, they maybe address all the things that I'm asking. It's just a.
I think it's a good way to maybe get at it. And, and then everyone feels like they're.
At the same time, our director of communications is also listening and writing. So you see her walking to the podium, which suggestion as well.
Much better wordsmith there than any of us.
I'm not sure I'm going to offer more clarity to the language. I guess one thing that I just wanted to bring forward to, because I think what board member Domon is saying about honoring the action team's work and also honoring the planning team, because it's kind of, if you think of it, it's kind of like an a balance, right? We're doing some work in this, we're sending it to this other group, seeing if that checks out. So one of the things I just did and we, and you shared too, that you've been diving into the action plan. So I went to the action plan to kind of see, was this action plan solely about reading, math, science, and writing? And it's not. So there is a strong focus in that particular plan. But I do think using that academic foundation, and that's part of what that planning team's work is doing, is they want to, they want to make sure that these result statements are pushing forward that strategy. And so one of the things I'll just say, and this is the work that we'll do together and and look through these action plans, I'm seeing some things about accommodations for students. I'm seeing some things about academic resource, support, tutoring. But there's also some language in their plan about critical thinking and creativity and problem solving. So and I would just bring that forward that, that I think that the groups, that that planning team was trying to honor what they were doing. But then I also, I can kind of look through their plan and see it wasn't solely about, there were those elements coming forward, certainly in certain steps. But I just, I, I want to just bring that forward as I think that there were other elements outside of those subject areas too.
Director Payne.
I have a proposed proposal for the language. Because of the additional box at the bottom about rigorous curriculum, which I think fits the things Alice was just sharing with us about critical thinking. If we go back to similar language to what was there before, because I'm struggling with the reading, writing piece, because we know it's reading, writing, listening, and speaking. So then it gets to be reading, writing, listening, speaking. Because we know it's reading, writing, listening and speaking. So then it gets to be reading, writing, listening, speaking, math, science, right? So it gets to be a mouthful. And so it maybe it could be that we think about those other things fitting under that last box as Barbara suggested for us. And under the academic foundation, change that to literacy, math and science. So it'll literally be more encompassing of the reading, the writing, the other parts. And it it keeps it more narrow, like you're saying honors. The work of a group of people who've done a lot of hard work on behalf of the district. And then the other piece we were talking about does fit in in that bottom box. So I'd be. I think it'd be a nice piece to to think of it from all perspectives and have it be literacy, math and science there. And then with the addition of that the bottom covering everything. It's an idea.
I I like the idea of literacy rather than reading and writing. Are there any other thoughts? Now, this will come up again when we're. Making one more.
All right, well, one down. Oh, okay. Yeah, well, I think it's really, you know, like at this point, this is your opportunity to kind of, yeah, weigh in, so.
You have a broader, different perspective in terms of you have to implement this. If you can't implement it, it's not, it's gonna do a lot of good.
Okay. The next box. We've talked about agency. The only thing I have thought on this is. I really liked over on the third box, it says that we have a common understanding of social non emotional wellness. I I'm guessing this will be built in, but I'm not sure why it's not in this box to say. That it there is like that we will have a common understanding of agency. I did not come with any word link or any language prepared, but I. I would.
Look what's happening.
Oh, great. Okay. I just, I think my point is. That's fine that it might be in the next steps, but I think it's important that we say it here because. As we all saw, we are still all trying to grasp how to articulate agency. So if we say part of our result statement is that we will have a community. With a common understanding of agency in that I I I think that would be good. Were you going to add something?
Just in the action thing for this, there is, so I would say there's a couple. There's they've outlined the definition for us. So they establish a common understanding of agency amongst stakeholders. We talked about that a little bit earlier, but also measurement. So a rubric for. Our students, but then also celebration was a part of their their intention here.
We're only voting on this. We're not voting on those. So that's why I'm like, I'd feel like.
So something like Monmouth Public Schools has a common under has provides where where's the one?
Well, it's it has a common understanding.
It's the first box over here.
Okay, so Monmouth Public Schools has a common understanding. And systems that cultivate, common understanding of agency and systems that cultivate and build agency.
No, you're saying agency twice, but that's fine.
Yeah, but it's not. Yeah.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Look at how quickly we got that one done.
Director Donna.
No, I was just shaking my head.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, next box. All students at Monmouth Public Schools are exposed to a variety of real world experiences through community connections and partnerships. We can just do a head nod if everyone's happy with that. Yes. All staff at Monmouth Public Schools have the tools and resources to utilize their strengths, interests and expertise to be leaders in their field. I think that sounds good. I could you add any context to that about what that would look like for teachers?
I think this has a lot to do with professional learning. This was a lot about professional learning and aligning both to their. Their curricular area, but also their interests within that curricular area so that they could be. You know, things that really motivate them. So it's the combination, but it had a lot to do with really strong professional learning for our teachers to be highly trained.
Okay, I'm seeing head nods, so we'll move to the next. So that next one. Is we will create an inclusive and equitable education system that values diversity and honors individuality. When I went through the four, I felt like there was a lot of. Overlap with some of the we will foster trust and partnership amongst all staff, students, families and community members. So it might be helpful to tease out because that probably happened naturally, right? The two different groups were probably talking about similar things. So it might help to have an understanding of how things landed. In the lanes they did.
How things land in like, so this this one here that we're looking at, this whole strategy was written by a different group than Roe. And it is really next as as. As groups are working on things for there to be overlap. That and to see themes come through in different, that's that's really natural because we're all same community and there is. I do think. While there is some overlap and some threads that probably weave through them, they were having different kinds of conversations based on the strategy. So. There's naturally some overlap in terms of wanting families to be connected and supported. For their child. I think that theme comes through in both. But with a different kind of focus is what I'd suggest. Did you want to go through each of those?
I I think so. I think so. Yes. Okay, so Monmouth Public Schools has an articulated diversity, equity and inclusion policy with prior prior prioritized actions and measures. I think everyone's in agreement on that one. Monmouth Public Schools connects with families using culturally and linguistically appropriate strategies. That one, I think I'd like more context.
Okay, and so that I had you had mentioned, a couple of you had asked questions about that. And I did ask strategy to. Action team leaders to be here, if you're going to be here, that maybe you could weigh in also. So. If we, if you, if I'm not getting it right, you're welcome to join us. But this one really has to do, for example, with our, I'll just give the example of families for whom English is not their first language. That would be an example of families where we, if we have. Systems to support, it's, you know, the systems to support families in navigating. Our our school system enrolling, I'm gonna can Leslie has some examples of how she's. Worked with families on enrollment. So ensuring our our web design, I think you gave the example too, is how do we update our web? Our webpage to be able to support families as they're looking for resources. Those would be some of the examples that I think of right off the bat.
To me, that feels like it fits over with our all stakeholders are welcome to engage and partner in this effort community. And we have a culture of bringing staff. So I felt like those three kind of. Were very, I understand they're reaching different people, but then at the same time, it's all.
Yeah, I think the one thing I'd want to say that was. And then again, if others have, if others want to jump in. Is that by calling it out specific, we have, we have families that we could serve better. And in part because they're a smaller population and maybe we don't always think about what we need to do. And there are some specific things that we need to do differently. Specific to, again, I'll just use families for whom English is not the first language. And so by calling it out specifically, it does require us to think differently. And think of different tools than we might otherwise if we're thinking about all families and the transition. So there are certain things we need to do differently for all our students when they transition between buildings. But then there are some really specific things that we're going to need to do. For our families who for whom English is not the first language. So that would be my suggestion of why they'd be called out separately.
Questions on that or is everyone good with that? Oh, Director Reagan.
I would just add that that was the way that I read that. And so I think about like. I was born as a native English speaker, and if I was interested in moving to Monmouth High Schools. And English wasn't the first language for me, you know, there might be some pretty big barriers. To be able to communicate not only with or to find out about us on our website, to communicate about. Tours and things like that. And so I think having this in here allows us to grow, to. Provide ways to connect with people that we haven't because. Even when my own four kids started Monmouth High Schools, I have seen our population of students. Has changed quite a bit in that time. And I think it's a, I think it's a great thing that we have families. Who want to move to Monmouth High to go to school here from all over. And Leslie's shared stories with us about people calling in from all over the country and different parts of the world even. Because of who we are. And so I think that this to me just shows how we can continually grow to connect with families because. I wonder who we've missed out on because of some of the ways that we all communicate that way because we all speak English. And I'm not saying that. Everything we have in the district being translated to me, this just allows an opportunity for us to grow. That's that's how I was reading it.
I'm thinking I I have a comment, I think. Maybe a question first. What's an example of a culturally appropriate strategy?
Okay, I'll think of another example, maybe. So for our families who are Muslim and there are certain prayer times. Knowing that, you know, if we always set up, I'm just, this is off the top of my head, if we always set up our parents. Opportunities to engage at the same time that is conflicting with religious practices and we haven't at least asked the question about either, how can we do things differently? Then we are, so thinking about asking ourselves the question, how can we do things differently to reach all parents? Are there things that we need to do individually for families? That are different than what we are doing? Could we do things differently? You know, so that all families can engage. I would, I'll just say that that would be one thing.
Okay.
As an example.
Okay. So I guess my thought is somewhat. Similar to Stacy's in the fact that. I I still feel that strategy two and strategy four have a lot of similarities. And just generally speaking, there's a lot of, a lot of words here. So anything that can be done to tighten up. The document, I would certainly be in favor of. And so I wonder if there's an opportunity to take the second result statement from strategy four. Systems at Monmouth Public Schools exist to support students and families as they transition into our district and between schools within the district. Is there an opportunity to combine those two and potentially add a word or two into that? That would accommodate. The culturally and linguistic piece of that. If the rest of the board would be in agreement on something like that, I would certainly be interested in figuring out a way to condense.
I'm I'm going to recommend that you not do that, what you just recommended in particular, because the. Strategy that you pulled out really is supposed to be talking about between districts, like so we. There there was a strategy for or this that strategy, the partnership strategy really identified that we have some gaps in our communication. Between when students transition, students and families transition between buildings. And we have some real gaps when families, students and families start in our district. That we need to work on in terms of communication process supports. So there, those are really specific, which is different from generally speaking, ways that we can support families. Throughout our, I mean, this, these are really, they are different. They're related, certainly related, but they are different. They're calling out something different. And so that would be my only, I would, I wouldn't, I would caution not to just combine those two because they really are calling out something different. So. Definitely related. I see the connection in terms of supporting families. But calling out something different.
Director Egan.
So Director Domon, I mean, on the fourth one, under the trusting relationships and partnerships. The one about the transitions, I was reading into that of thinking about as our students transition from Wildwood to OH, from OH to the middle school, all of that. Like, for example, we all know how hard that middle school, you know, time period is and as how much changes from elementary to middle school and all the expectations on students going from. One teacher or kind of a home base to all these different classes. And so that's how I was reading that one. And then I was reading the one about. The connections with families about the culturally and linguistically. Very different, like I gave my example. So I think that they're a yes and rather than a one or the other. That was my take on that. I don't know. That's my interpretation.
Director Peterson.
I'm curious. Financially, do what do we do on a family call that doesn't speak English? Do we hire someone to? Help enroll them?
We do. Well, we do have a a language line that we can use so that there's like a, we can call in and get an interpreter to help. With that. We also have.
Free resource?
It's not an MDE free resource. I couldn't speak to the cost of of the service, but.
Okay, Monmouth Public Schools employs a culturally responsive professional staff that more closely represents the racial ethnic diversity of our student population. So I talked to earlier about this one, just with Superintendent Dufferin. I I really like that we are already being culturally responsive. Our staff is getting. Education and and. I wouldn't call it training, but they they get information to make sure that they are. Aware of the students in their class and what they might be. What their family and cultural background might be encompassing at that point. I have more reservation about. Staff that more closely represents the racial ethnic diversity of our student population because that sounds like hiring. And I'm not sure. I don't want to get into. Legal trouble in terms of saying we will only hire if they look a certain way.
Well, we don't do that.
Okay.
So just.
That language made me a little nervous.
Sure, no. I, this one is about using strategies to try to increase the diversity of our staff. So for example. I can think of, I know that there are school districts that partner with. With institutions of higher education that have a more diverse population. And so then there's an opportunity to get. Student teachers, more diverse student teachers to come into the district and then potentially find jobs here in the future. So that would be the kinds of things, you know, it would be strategies to try and. Have a bigger pool, a more diverse pool. Now that said, we know there isn't a very diverse pool of candidates in the. There aren't that many teachers out there anymore, but there, yeah, it's just not a very diverse pool. So there, I mean, certainly there are challenges with. With that. But we do not just say we're out looking for only, you know, people of color to hire. We do not say we're only looking for men to hire or only women. I mean, that's, we don't do that. So just to be clear.
Except the language says. School, the Monmouth High Schools will or employs. Staff that more closely. So I just, I wonder if we could say Monmouth Public Schools employs a culturally responsive professional staff. And leave it at that. How do people feel about that? Director Payne.
I like the language we have. If you're concerned about the legality of it, I would be more open to softening the language to make it clear that we're still hiring. The most qualified teacher, but we will employ these strategies. This is a statewide initiative that's happening. I said in the licensing board, this is the focus that everyone has right now because of the research that shows that all students do better. When they have a diverse staff. And so I'm not comfortable letting it go because I think it's important. And it it ties to work that's happening statewide. But I I agree, we could soften it because of concerns. You're a legal expert. I am not. If there's concerns about the legal piece of it, I would like to fix the language, but not delete. Um, if there's concerns about the legal piece of it, I would like to fix the language, but not delete the language.
Egan.
So I think this is just us casting a wider net of saying that we're just, we really want to encourage teacher candidates from all backgrounds to apply to be an educator or staff member in our district. It's not making any sort of preference one way or over the other. However, you know, I think about like African American students or Asian American students and I, I can't claim to even relate because I'm not African American or Asian American. But I think about if I am Asian American and I'm in Moda Media Public Schools and I look around and there's not a single staff member that looks like me. If that Asian American staff member is the best candidate, to me, that's a win-win for that, that student. Now they've got a connection with somebody that maybe they share some cultural background. Again, I, I wasn't reading into that we're, there's no word of preference or anything like that. To me, this is a wider net casting and of course let the, the top rise to the top and we hire the best candidate. However, there could be a win-win if that top candidate is somebody that our more diverse student population can build connections with and relationships with. So I guess I would dig my heels in on this one a little bit because I feel like that is something that is um, there's definitely a lot of work around the state and around the country about that as well to try and make sure that uh we're casting wider nets about who we're, who, to get people to know more about Moda Media and want to work here.
I have a language proposal. What if it were to read, Moda Media Public Schools employs a culturally responsive professional staff and we work to employ a highly qualified staff that is more closely representative of the, 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 the. I can give that language to someone over there too. But, so it puts those qualifiers in that you're saying Stacy, in terms of saying, you know, still highly qualified. It's, we're working to do this, it doesn't guarantee we're going to be able to do this because there are parts of this that are out of our control, but it is saying that we're going to work on this as, as an area.
Maybe say, and we work to build a commu- I, I don't know, I don't like the word employ.
Okay.
Director Domon. But I do at the beginning, I do for the first sentence, we do employ a culturally responsible professional staff. But then she said, and work to employ, so uh Director Domon, sorry.
So I get back to the spirit and the intent of the group and I'm looking at the action steps for this. And I just want to read them so that we're all clear on what the group's intent was. Set goals and benchmarks for teacher, principal and other school that are hiring, development and retention so that staff better reflects the racial and ethnic diversity of the state and so that all educators improve their culturally inclusive and sustaining practices. Conduct a DEI focused audit of educator recruitment, hiring, development and retention practices so that leadership can identify strengths and opportunities to improve in the current system. Prioritize professional learning resources, people, time and money to focus on diversity, equity and inclusion. Update Q-Cop and teacher evaluation measurements to comply with the newest Minnesota Department of Education standards of effective practice that now include diversity, equity and inclusion benchmarks and provide regular procedural trainings on resources, staff and communities. Interpreter services, access to cultural liaisons, Google Docs and embedded translations, connections to mental health professionals so that the district staff can fully, can fully access structures that exist. Um, based on that intent and spirit of the action steps, I'm not comfortable um with the way that that is currently worded.
The, the result statement.
Correct.
So which part, so is it including what?
Well, we've, we've just, we've been talking about the, the hiring piece of this, right? And so if the intent of this result statement is to send benchmarks that better reflect the racial and ethnic diversity of the state, I, I, I don't think that's something that we should be trying to achieve as a district.
Yeah, so to be clear on that part two, I'll just say that the planning team also talked about that and said that they want, they, that's why the language specifically says to reflect the diversity of our student population. So I want you to know that the planning team agreed with you on that, they were, they had that same conversation.
So what are we to make of the fact though that the components of the strategic plan talk about how leadership teams are going to consult with the plans when setting the annual goals?
Say that again, how do we make?
Well.
Part of interpreting this.
Right, so, and one of the things when we talked about this, um, so thank you for talking about this bunch with me this week too. Um, one of the things we talked about is that um, these are the, these are the steps that the um, action team is recommending. Um, but we also, as a leadership team and, and as a board, we, what we're approving are the result statements and then we get to go from there and determine what it is we need to do um for specific action steps. These are recommendations, these are, you know, every one of these action plan, uh, action teams did some research for us. They're giving us some resources that they've considered. Um, but then it, it's up to us to determine what it is that we do. And so, um, and they knew that, they knew that when they submitted this, that they are, it's not that we take this and, and go through each of these action steps, um, these are their recommendations. So just like the planning team discussed, um, changing the language so that it reflects our student population, that was one, that was certainly one conversation we had. We also had the conversation about how difficult it is to recruit or to find or to have applicants, um, diverse applicants. So, so that's, um, those are some things I'd want you to know. I saw, um, I saw, uh, once again, and sorry for coming up here to maybe make a recommendation because I do understand um your point about employees as being.
Oh, Director Donna.
I'm sorry, I was just wordsmithing in my mind and I spoke out loud, so go ahead, keep, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Um, so one, I, I would just mention, one thing we want to do um with the result statements is have them worded as um outcomes, so not process either. So I heard some language that might be more process. So um, one suggestion that I might have for you is to reword it a little bit and it takes out the employees part. Um, just to reword, staff at Moda Media Public Schools are culturally responsive and more closely represent the racial ethnic diversity of our student population.
I'm going to go the financial route again.
Okay.
Director.
That it says prioritizes money. And Barb, you were explaining.
Yeah, so that's, okay, so I'll just say, um, so from the action teams, there are, are recommendations in here. Sometimes in this process, you'll, you'll get um an action step that says hire a, so, you know, like this position, hire someone who specifically focuses on that. Well, that's not the work of the action team, that's the work of the school board, the administrative team to figure out budgeting and such. So I'll just say that these are recommending, you know, there are recommendations in here, these are things, but that doesn't necessarily mean what it is we're going to do because um, the people who wrote this aren't in charge of the budget, so, but, which is not to, you know, take anything away from the work they've done. I just would, you know, there are decisions that have to be made by others. So could I go back and just, uh, it, the recommendation with staff are culturally responsive and more closely represent the racial ethnic diversity of our student population. That was the.
Or, I mean, could you say, or value the racial ethnic diversity of our student population? Or does that not get at it?
Well, I think that at this point, it's kind of up to you. Um, I, the intent of this is to have a more diverse staff and that, that's where it's, it's.
I just don't know how you do that without saying you're hiring a fun.
And so if that's, I, I guess I'll just suggest then if that is something that is really uncomfortable for you to have it written in there in that way, then um, then I, you know, then this is where, this is where you rewrite, so.
It, it's not that I disagree that we, uh, yes, I understand that the diversity for any student who has um, comes from a different culture or even different skin color, yes, it's gr- it's very important that they have somebody representing them. But I don't know how we, I don't know how you fix that because they don't live in our, if they're not already living in our community or they haven't chosen, chosen to come here, I don't know how we make that happen.
So much like your employer, right? You have a, a plan probably because HLC requires you to have a plan for recruitment of diverse personnel. So it'd be a similar kinds of things, where do we advertise? How do we recruit? You know, some of those things which shift and change. Right now, all that's required in rule and statute is that we post to the state jobs board. But it might be we recruit through urban teacher residency programs. It might be that we look to hire um diversity within the paraprofessional field and then they work through the nine sixteen program, um, Superintendent Deference involved with in, in that licensure program, right? So there are ways to recruit and I think this is just saying that we're going to do our best to increase that through recruiting and different strategies. It's not saying that we will or won't be successful in doing that because you're right. We don't get to decide where people come to live or be employed, but we can take steps and have strategies to um help people find us as a place to be employed and we can recruit from a, a different space than just the state jobs board.
Casting the wider net, that's all that, I go back to that. To me, it's not preferential, it's just expanding our places of potentially recruiting people to want to come here, that maybe they wouldn't have otherwise felt like this was a place that was welcoming for them. Not preference, not putting anyone towards the top, but just making it a possibility.
I can give another example. Um, I know at the high school recently, a student teacher, a diverse student teacher came out and toured the high school um as a potential place to either do student teaching or look to employment later. But the high school administration took time and space in their day for this candidate to come out and see the great things we offer in engineering because that is the focus of his license, math and engineering. And, you know, so there was an effort made there in that recruitment. Did that student, I mean, did that student choose to come here for student teaching? I don't know, you know, but there was an effort made. But there was an effort made, right, to recruit where before districts don't usually open up and say, oh, do you want to come look at us to potentially student teacher? No, they don't do that, we, historically that hasn't been done. But the fact our high school and the administration is taking that, you know, half an hour to tour that person around and try and entice them in coming here for the potential to be either, even if it's only a student teacher, to have a representation for tho- that, you know, fifteen weeks in the building is going to make a difference, right? If they don't come here for student teaching, that person has walked away with, wow, look what Moda Media is doing. And it helps us in him thinking about future employment and or spreading the word within his circle of folks, his communities that might be more diverse. Does that help to have examples?
So I, I think, again, these are supposed to be written as results. So as a result of what we've done, there, we have a more diverse staff. You know, that's, that's how you could read it. Um, and to your point, we probably wouldn't want to tie specific numbers to it by the time, you're right, but just we become more diverse, I have more diverse staff because of efforts we've made.
Yes.
I don't know, that might be a way to, and no longer, if we didn't have it say employees, Moda Media Public School staff are culturally responsive and more closely represent. So it's the results over time that we're trying to move towards.
Thank you.
How about that?
Next. Moda Media Public Schools has programs in place that prevent bullying and harassment that are consistent with, but not limited to our school districts' equal education opportunity policy. Everybody good with that one? Okay, can we move to the third column? Uh, we will ensure the social and emotional well-being of students and staff with an emphasis on mental wellness. The first box says staff, students and families at Moda Media Public Schools have a common understanding of social and emotional wellness and learning practices and their impact. I will say I'm very happy to see we're going to establish a common understanding of social and emotional wellness. And I was in group four and we talked a lot about this. So it's not in, it wasn't in our statement, but um, I think my group would have agreed with that as well.
Was my group?
Okay.
Yes. That is on the top for a reason. Um, we just wanted families more aware of how we handle it, what their children are given this. Without saying the word surveys, this was where our group talked a lot about surveys, the opting out, the just, what words are you using, where can this be given out to parents upcoming, calendar testing?
Okay, any other comments, questions? Moda Media Public Schools has a district mental wellness team with systems in place to support emerging mental health issues and trends among staff and students. Everybody good? Okay. Moda Media Public Schools provides daily opportunities for movement year round across all buildings to enhance social and emotional well-being. Director Peterson.
We had a high schooler in our group and she was wonderful. Um, elementary kids get to move several times a day, um, gym recess and then you lose it in middle school. And she said by high school, we don't really move unless you take gym as an elective or you can walk at lunch sometimes. So this one came a lot from an actual high school student. That's why we said all buildings, that was really important to us.
And it's tied to mental wellness, I'm guessing. Okay, uh, any other comments? Moda Media Schools has responsive tools and systems in place that effectively support staff's social and emotional well-being. Barb, could you provide any context to that?
Um, so I wasn't in this group, I can say that um, the conversation um, there's someone here who was on this one in particular, right?
Was staff emphasis, a place where they can go that's confidential. Um, Kevin, correct, is this the right story? There um, the high school did employ, stop me if this is not right. Um, the high school did have someone they could talk to, what, in the last few years, five years? And it turned out to be not very confidential and it really soured a lot of staff on coming forward, correct? Yeah.
So Director Donna, you probably couldn't hear that because we asked a person in the, the audience who was on this team and just really emphasizing that there was supposed to be a separation between staff and students as, as an emphasis, so.
Thank you for the explanation.
Um, I'll just say too, um, in, if, in that group, there was um, a, a real emphasis on wanting to make sure stu- the staff really found this helpful. That they were really getting um support as opposed to the district just kind of saying, hey, we're doing things and them not actually finding them helpful. So that was, um, the wording originally was um something around that staff were reporting that they really were using this and it was helpful. And then the planning team altered the language a little bit to make it clear that it was responsive and there was kind of a feedback loop. So that was the intent of the change there, but that's for, what I know.
Director Egan.
Um, so I really appreciate this one and the fact that we know that teacher retention has been a big issue since COVID, especially in knowing that um, staff is a big part of this and that conversation um so that they are, their needs are being addressed as well and they have resources um to utilize and or systems in place to be able to support them because otherwise that's what leads to teacher burnout and then they leave the profession and maybe there, you know, if there's systems in place for staff to be able to address.
things that are happening, you know, we need our staff to be supported and happy in order. So I really appreciate the staff component of this one.
Director Peterson.
Address the board. Does anyone else, number two, I'm going back. I shouldn't have nodded my head, yes. Does anyone else have any, get a strange feeling or just not quite right with number two? Would you reread that?
The mental, the Modemite Schools has a district mental wellness, that one?
Well, it's more in the middle of that.
Okay, I'll keep reading. Modemite Public Schools has a district mental wellness team with systems in place to support emerging mental health issues and trends among staff and students.
So we do have a mental health team in place.
That's a check. All thinking out loud.
All your. A mental wellness. School has, you know, counselors and social workers. There's any place to put in there without dipping into strategy four. With a relationship. Emerging mental health issues is a very fine line for me that the school is not diagnosing the school. Emerging mental health, the word emerging is bothering me. If we could somehow throw in partnership with parents. That they're in the loop. If a teacher thinks you have an emerging mental health problem.
Oh, um, maybe I, I think, I think that, well, when I read that, I think it just means that our staff is up to date on mental health, like emergency, emerging to me is that they are aware of mental health issues and they're constantly up to date as opposed to you're thinking of it as an individual, maybe. I'm not. I don't know. I think it's.
That's why I'm asking if anyone else sitting here has a, has a strange feeling about that without the word parents in there.
So I think, I mean, what you said also, and what you were speaking to is that our classroom teachers are not able to diagnose, right? That is not their job. They don't have the qualifications that, that is not their space. They have more than enough without that. And so I appreciate the way with our literacy work, we have gone to saying we're not diagnosing kids with dyslexia. We're saying they have characteristics of. So if we took off that word issues and just put in the term characteristics, would that help in thinking about that? Because when I think about some of the characteristics of emerging mental health issues, there's that word issues again, sorry. But I think that helps us keep buildings safe, classrooms running efficiently, you know, those kinds of things. That's where I look at when I think about those trends, you know? Then I think about how do we forecast needs and addressing before they happen. And when you say issues, I feel like it's already diagnosed and goes to some of the language you were saying. So I wonder if it's just a change in that term issues to characteristics of.
And if you just added the word families after support. That with the word families after support. I'm sorry. For family, oh, no, that doesn't work, but.
I have a quick comment.
Yep. Director coming.
It's an interesting point Jenny, and I appreciate you bringing it up, something I didn't think of. But I'll also Barb, I think I understand the direction you're going, even though I can't articulate it very well, I think I understand where you're going with that. I'm wondering, what if it said something to the extent of Modemite Public Schools has a district mental wellness team and, team and systems in place? Because then you could work on that system to include parent and guardian involvement.
Use the word and instead of with. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and maybe that's completely unnecessary. I don't want to do an amendment if it's unnecessary. But my intent in making that comment was calling out the need to have parent guardian involvement in mental health issues. And I, I think if you have both a district team and the district system that calls out the involvement of the parents and the guardians, maybe that's a way to keep the wording concise, but also honor the involvement of the families.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of how to word it. I see what you're, I, I think the and does actually, I would agree that and does help with that.
And incorporates parent involvement. Why, could you say in place to support emerging mental health characteristics and trends among, it's among staff and students. Here it comes. Parent notification? Maybe that's the word I need.
Alice.
So the emerging was emerging mental health issues, not individual, just a superintendent deference. So I'm going to, I'm going to attempt and honor what you're saying about family partnership. Modemite Public Schools has systems in place to support emerging mental health issues and trends in the district in partnership with families.
One more time, please.
Sure. Modemite Public Schools has systems in place to support emerging mental health issues and trends in the district in partnership with families.
I like that. And as we're making these changes, I think as we've been agreeing on them, I think when we go to pass this, I'll just say the language that's been, unless somebody's.
Yeah, and I'll do my best to kind of summarize. If I have it exactly reworded, I will say it. And if I can come close, because I, there's some, there's some verb tense problems I'm having as we go.
But I think that makes it clear. So thank you, Director Peterson. I do think that makes it clear that the board's intention is always that we've had discussions at this table before that parents are always involved in, in any issue with a child with concerns that there's health characteristics that are being seen. I think we've had those discussions before. Oh, Director Donna.
I guess I'm struggling with, I'm struggling with the title of this strategy with, with the word ensure in the title. Ensure is a very powerful word. I think we, we all can agree. And.
Paul, we talked about that for weeks.
Okay, can you add some perspective, please?
Peterson. Oh, Director Peterson. Oh, Barb, you answered with the word strive.
Yeah, so ensure, the idea is again, these things are aspirational. When we talk about ensuring the social and emotional well being, this was written by the planning. Yes, by the planning team, I had to think.
I know.
Yeah. And the idea was, the idea was to be aspirational at that, and that's where it comes from. And so these are the things that we're working on to get in that direction. Direction.
Oh, Director Peterson.
But Paul, I'm, I'm a hundred percent with you. I, every meeting, I tried to get rid of that word.
I mean, I, I appreciate, I appreciate being aspirational. I just, to me, ensure, I mean, I see the word ensure in this document related to academics and that is what I would say that's where our expertise is, is in academics, correct? When I see the word ensure associated with social and emotional well being, I don't see, that's not our expertise. We're providing and trying to develop and to support systems and then, and then and identify help for those folks who need that help by, by the trained experts.
Do you want me to just jump in? I know this has been a lot of conversations about this. I think you will still honor the intent if you change ensure to support.
Support or strive? I think strive might even be more powerful. I defer to others' opinions on that, but I, I'd go with either one. I would, I like those, I like either one.
Their preference by anyone else?
I don't know how strive fits.
Oh yeah, I see that, right? I, now that I read that, I agree. It doesn't, that doesn't, support does, for sure.
I get head nods, we will support, everyone's good with that, okay. Okay, oh, Director Reagan.
And I may be in the minority of this, but I'm wondering if we could take a five minute recess for a bathroom break.
Yes.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I call us to, or I call recess for five minutes. We will return at nine forty-five. Okay, it's time. Board members back over here.
Bang that thing, bang it. I want you to.
Hey, we're.
Did I sound like this?
I will call us back into session.
You have us back on?
Okay, where were we?
Column four.
Column four. I will just read through these and look around for if people have comments on them. We will foster trust and partnership amongst all staff, students, families and community members. Modemite Public Schools provides clarity and transparency around learning and curriculum at each grade level. Systems at Modemite Public Schools exist to support students and families as they transition into our district and between schools within the district. All stakeholders are welcomed to engage and partner in the ZEPFer community. Modemite Public Schools has a culture of bringing staff, families and students together for relationship building. Director Peterson.
Comment, this one hits kind of close to home for me because I have some, some issues with some of that, that. This is big picture district, but then when we write goals, that's taking these more specifically? Something? Or is that then principals take these and write building goals?
Yes, so you may have as a board, you may have some part of this that's one of your goals around within these result statements. But it's also the case that our district leadership team took a run at these already and identified that at building levels, these need to be addressed. So the transitions between schools, for example, that's, you know, that's work that we need to do. Transitions for families that come into our district, that's building level work as well. And so there will be building goals in this area as well. Is that the question?
When you said you had concerns, you meant not with the wording of this, that, that your concerns will be addressed by these.
The actions.
Okay, will address concerns that you've had, okay. I just would like to say that this was my group and everyone's happy.
Before you. So I guess I just want to comment, and I apologize for, you know, going on to some of the topics we discussed. I understand everybody, I think I understand everybody's individual point of view. But my comment here is that I still feel like there, this is too wordy for my liking at this point. And I still feel there's a lot of redundancies between strategy two and strategy four. And it's just one board member's opinion that we, we work to remove the redundancies between two and four and combine them together into a more succinct statement. Not solely for the sake of brevity, but to make the action that is a result of this, these result statements more, more achievable, I think is what I'm trying to say. So I apologize for the kind of rambling response here. But I think there's just too much redundancy between strategies two and four. And I would be in favor of working to combine some of the result statements.
Director Payne.
Help understanding what you're saying. Are you saying the the white boxes have too much overlap or the gold box at the top has too much overlap? Where do you see overlap?
I, I think in both. And it's not just overlap, I just think there's a, there's an opportunity to be more succinct in both cases and again, just one board member's opinion. I mean, I'll give you an example. Scroll down to some of my notes here. You know, I'd suggest that there's an opportunity. Result statements three and four found under strategy four. So all stakeholders are welcome to engage and partner in the ZEPFer community. And Modemite Public Schools has a culture of bringing staff, families and students together for relationship building. Certainly worthy result statements, and I think they're fantastic things to strive for. I just think for the sake of clarity, you can combine them to potentially read something to the extent of Modemite Public Schools has a culture of bringing staff, families, students and the community together for relationship building, engagement and partnership.
I understand you're, okay, so I can help with that a little bit. This was actually a conversation with the planning team because there actually used to be three. There was a third, a third statement and it was in strategy three. So there's a strategy three at the bottom, right? What does that say?
Modemite Schools have a culture that provides opportunities for collaboration across all ages in the community to help foster social, emotional well being.
Yeah, so that one was eliminated to the, your point actually, because it was so much like these two. However, these two are, the conversation was specifically calling out that there are specific ways to engage the larger community in like community partnerships. And then there are different ways that we want to engage our families and staff and students. And they did want to have them as separate because there's a different kind of focus with each. And you might also think of it as what another, maybe this is helpful, I don't know. When we take these action plans and these result statements, there are different people in our, in our our, our leadership team that will take different result statements and run with them. We certainly have our overlap. So for example, again, we went through all of these and figured out where we did have overlap throughout our whole leadership team where everyone had a part in. And so we know those. And then there are others that are specific to just one of us or a couple of us. And so by separating them, we actually, it does actually have, there is a different focus for each of those. So I, I'll offer that as maybe some, some reason why there are more words, but the really the intent is, is for those two.
Conversation a little bit with you. So I appreciate what you're saying because I like the fact that there's overlap between these because it shows that we have a cohesive direction that we're moving with this plan. And some of that overlap that you're speaking of, I think more to as we think about board and superintendent goals for the next go around. Some overlap comes together in that space and helps focus us even more to give us that clear direction you're, you're thinking of. Because we as a group, we refer to this a lot, but really this now we hand it off to our administration and say, yeah, make that happen. And then we focus more in on what we have for our goals as a board for the next two, three years that we write and develop come August. And that's where I see what you're seeing happen where those. And that's where I see what you're seeing happen, where those commonalities come together and we choose our focus from that space. And I see some of those same things you're seeing about, well, I want to pull this from here and this from here and put it together in one cleaner package in that space. So I like the way that you're thinking and I see the things that you're seeing, but for this document, because I'm not having to live and work underneath these like administration is. And I want it to be, I want them to accomplish it. So if it helps administration and the team to be able to accomplish these things by having it have that duplication across, I'm going to let it go.
Again, I don't think it is duplication because the intent is different on those two. Overlap, same theme, maybe different results.
Director Peterson.
Brian, I agree. They say the same thing to me. And I know last Tuesday they were tried to break them apart into two things. Will you remind me which one means community?
That all stakeholders are welcome to engage and partner in the Zephyr community. That was the intended to be the one that is more external. You know, bringing
That's homecoming.
Partnership. Yeah, sure.
And then the bottom one is school.
Internal. Yeah. So how do we
In the classroom.
Yeah. How do we get families in more? What are those ways that we're going to engage families? And, and, and that one, if you recall, was that relationship building between staff and families? The, the whole conversation around assuming positive intent. And if you remember that.
I, I'm sorry. I appreciate your point of view and I understand your point of view. I, I struggle with it because it comes down to individual interpretation. And in my case, the way I am interpreting the words that are in front of me are kind of as I shared before. I've also reviewed the action steps. And again, that's how I've interpreted this to this point. And I, and to be quite honest, like I would even take it a step further. And my, again, just one board member's opinion is that I think the yellow boxes representing strategy two and strategy four could be combined. And could read something to the extent of we will foster trust and partnership among all staff, students, families, and community members to support an education system that values diversity and honors individuality. And then work to combine some of the result statements underneath that. And I apologize because I know that's a, a lot to absorb at ten o'clock. But I, I just need to share my point of view and opinion on this.
Of course, Director Dom, and I see it opposite of that. Like, I feel like it's really important to call out the differences of them. That they're, they're in partnership and they're the yes and of one another, but they're calling out very different things that the, the second one to me is about creating the, the systems in place to allow for an educational system that celebrates our own uniqueness and also what makes us together as a Zephyr. But then the fourth one to me is about those relationships and partnerships. So I, I, I've struggled with the combining them of them. I think that they support one another, but I don't see them as the same thing at all. I just don't.
Kelly, the way you just read strategy two would help a lot for me. You read it as we will create an educational system that values individuality and diversity. That reads so much better to me. We will create an educational system that values diversity and honors individuality.
But why, why remove the inclusive and equitable words to that?
Because it says it four more times underneath it. One, two, three, three more times.
Maybe because the words equity are in the result statements?
No other strategy does that, do they? I just like how you read it, how you summarized. I, I'm I like it that way, too. If it's, I, I feel like it gets at the same thing. I think I look at each of these words and I think, I know I believe that I want this for all of us, for our district. And I believe all of us want it to. I, I want our students to be inclusive. I want every student to receive an equitable education. I want our students to value diversity. And I want them to honor individuality. I think unfortunately, the word equitable has become politicized. And I think people use it in different ways. So that makes me a little, when you took it out, I was like, oh, feels like there's a little something there that's not. I don't know, just doesn't, sometimes it just gets used in ways that
I think we have work to do for equity, and I think that it's important to leave it in. I'm a person who needs glasses to read. Someone else doesn't need glasses to read, but are both of our, we both have a goal to read. And so equity, equity doesn't mean equal. And the fact that even we all can't describe exactly what equity would mean, we might all have a different definition. We have work to do in order to be, create a system that honors individuality and celebrates our diversity. And I think it's really important for us to leave it in. I, I don't see equity as politicized at all. It, to me, it has nothing to do with politics. It has to do with providing the resources that our students need.
And I don't think it does either. I think the word gets used that way, though, to cause more division than.
I have a, I have a comment, Madam Chair. Yeah, I agree that in my mind, equity means creating the resources, making sure that everyone has the same resources to achieve their goals. If I don't, but I, I, I don't believe that what troubles me a little bit and where I think we, it's so important that the, the board is, the board's intent is understood with the implementation. What I'm troubling with, what I'm troubled with is in the action steps and in some of that language, I don't believe that's necessarily the definition of equitable. And I don't know if everyone on the board has had the benefit of reading that information. I don't know. I'm raising that as just a point to make that the challenge here is that the, these ideas that were brought forth with how to achieve these objectives and strategies. The implementation of that has to be, the intent has to be understood. And we just raised the question that not everyone understands what, everyone has different meaning, a different understanding or a different perspective of what that means, that word means. It's a very powerful word in today's dynamics, unfortunately, that I think, I think this, our whole board is, is, is of the same intent that what we understand it to mean, but I'm not sure that the information that supports what went into supporting that is of the same thought.
So again, just as a reminder, the board's approving, we're looking for the board to approve the result statements.
Yeah.
And, and it's helpful to look at what the action team did to get to the result statement to give you that context. But as a reminder, those action steps are up for the board and administrative team to determine what it is that we should do. One, the first thing, to your point, I think, Director Donna, the first result statement that is in this strategy says specifically is calling out having an, a policy around diversity, equity, inclusion. To be clear on what it is we mean by diversity, equity, inclusion. It's a different way of saying what's really in the next, you know, like at the top of the next two. Or actually, all of, the first box in all of these strategies is talking about getting clear on what it is we mean by each of these. So what is it that we mean by district level, you know, about excellence? That's one, you know, that's the first one in that, the one we haven't gotten to yet. What does it mean to talk about social, emotional wellness and learning? And what does it mean, you know, clarity and transparency around learning curriculum? That first box is what, what do we mean by diversity, equity, inclusion? So I'll just say that I think their intent is for us to get really clear on that. And it's not for us to shy away from using the word equity. It's for us to be really clear on what it means. I just, I would just encourage you to, I don't know, not shy away from using the word equity. It's, I don't think anyone else is. I think you, you, how many, how many corporations have diversity, equity, inclusion statements right now? I, I don't think it's something we should think of as political. I don't think it's something we should, I, in my opinion, I don't think it's something to worry about. I think it's something to be clear about and to work together to bring clarity to it. But I also like the word agency and don't want to shy away from that either. So to be clear, that's, that would be my opinion.
Yeah, I, I would just echo that to be a little clearer when I said, I think the term gets politicized. I mean, people use it different ways, but I agree that we are clear in that we will be defining it within our policy. So I
Yeah. And the, I mean, the great thing about it being a policy, calling out policy means it's board work. So that's one of your goals. It's going to be one of your goals this, you know, years for it to be an opportunity. I don't know. That would be my
Can we circle back to what started all of this? The how it reads? It seems five of us had an opinion on it, four of us. Clear what you just asked. Well, this whole conversation started with the title. That's what I meant. Just, I thought we usually head nod now or Oh, so you're, I, I'm sorry. I was not following. She's asking head nod on we will create an educational system that values diversity and honors individuality. I think we know where people stand. Well, I, I don't know where everyone stands. I don't, I don't have full head nods is the question is the answer.
I would be supportive of removing equitable from strategies two's statement.
Though we're going to be creating a DEI policy.
We're watering down the intent of this. It's disappointing, in my opinion.
It's just in two boxes in a row. That's why I brought it up.
Um, so there's some, would you like, so there is somebody from, one of the action, two of the action team leaders from strategy two, if, if you'd, if you'd like to hear the intent, that's the, the hand raising back there.
I don't know if I'm going to, I mean, yes. They want to come up.
Did you two want to just talk about the intent? Okay. I, and I, I did ask them to be here be, in particular, because we didn't have a board member on this team. And I had questions about two. And so, so that is why.
Hi, I'm Jane Nicholson.
I'm sorry, Director.
And we were two of the three team leaders. First of all, all the work of our group, which was a lot of hours of research, was around how the strategy is written. So now if you change how the strategy is written, that, that seems really, you were talking before about taking away from the work that people have done. We did hours of work and research to work on the strategy as it was written, thinking that we were just making result statements and felt strongly that equity and diversity and all need to be part of inclusion, part of the statement. So that it was clear what we're working on. And the idea of having a policy is this, as a district, we're going to define what that means for our district and we'll have something to work from. So I guess I feel like by taking diversity and equity and inclusion out of it, I, I mean, we would have, I mean, that's, it's a different strategy. It doesn't, it seems to disregard and disrespect sort of a lot of hours of community work. So that's my initial, initial reaction.
At our first meeting, we did a little practice where we went and circled every word in our statement that we thought was important to it. And about every word, but like that and and was circled, but amongst the first were inclusive and equitable. And of that sentiment throughout the whole, you know, three-month process on sixth meeting. And so to erase that feels like it's taken away from the spirit of our strategy.
Director Payne? Oh, oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
A quick comment. Thank you for sharing. And I'll be very transparent. I, I'm mentally very much struggling with this. And to be clear, I, I have not advocated for the removal of diversity or inclusion. I think that's incredibly important for everyone associated with our district. I'm struggling with the definition of equity. And so, you know, when you look at what the actual definition of equity is, the state or quality of being just and fair, justice achieved not simply according to the strict letter of the law, but in accordance with principles of substantial justice and the unique facts of the case. I, I struggle with how that fits into the strategy.
Oh, I'm going to ask you a question. Would, would it help if you knew that you were on the, you would be part of defining it for our district and what we mean when we use the term?
Um, yeah, probably, but it's not just. I, I've tried to intentionally say it's just one board member's opinion. I don't want it to be just my opinion of equity. So I, I understand what you're saying and I appreciate the suggestion and I'm certainly happy to participate. So, I mean, I guess, yes, that would help.
I guess my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you've been concerned that some of these words, because we don't have them defined here, when you vote for it, if you vote for this, you would be vote, it would, it might take on a direction that you were not intending when you supported it. And that's been your concern. So, and that's why I've said, okay, sometimes words are used differently and it's, they get used in ways that, you know, aren't helpful. So I'm trying to help get to a place where you feel like you are on solid footing in, in, in moving forward. And so if that's why I'm offering to say, you know, I think if you're part of ensuring that you know where it's going and where the wording is, how it's, how it's, what's, what it is encompassing, does that help you feel better about moving forward?
Yeah, I think it does. And I think you hit on something that's important is I don't want a vote of support to eventually be misconstrued because there is broad definitions for a lot of the result statements. And Barb, it's what we've kind of talked about a few times, which I've really struggled with that. And And unfortunately, I'm still kind of stuck in that same spot right now. And so that's why I kind of keep coming back to this.
And I appreciate that you haven't been through this process before, where we take these then right goals and, um, and make plans accordingly. And, and you also haven't been through a whole year of board work where you hear from us on a regular basis what it is we're doing and what our, what our actions are related to the strategic plan, because that's part of being on the board as well as you're going to hear from all of us. And we pull out what it is we're working on related to the strategic plan and we share that with you. So then it becomes really clear. You see it and you know what's happening. And in the moment, you have an opportunity to, to weigh in on that as well. And so that's part of our work together. And you not having been through it, I, I recognize that it's a bit of a leap of faith for you. I just would want to assure you that that is our work with you as an administrative team is to, is to report regularly on what it is we're doing. And again, we'll be setting some goals in August to say for you all to have input on what it is you'd like to see happen, you know, operationally, I guess.
Director Regan.
Um, so like Director Domon, in the last strategic plan, when there were statements about like students pursuing their passion, then we got to hear about how some of those examples of what that looked like and how some of the things that are happening was suffer time at the high school and things like that and how allowing for students to have more opportunity to do things other than what was just prescribed to them in their daily schedule. And that was like, those are those goals and are actionable steps or things that we got to see as a result of that. And so I look at, for example, the second one under the inclusive and equitable educational system, like the culturally and linguistically appropriate strategies. Those were some of the things that maybe was called out earlier about like providing opportunities through how we reach families through our website in a different way, or reaching families when they call in using the language line or things like that where that's equal, equity doesn't mean equal. I don't need that resource because I speak English. But a family who doesn't speak English needs that resource, just like I need glasses to read, but you don't need glasses, maybe appendix, I don't know. But you know what I mean? Like we, it doesn't, equity doesn't mean we all get the same thing. It means we get the things that we need to be successful.
Yep.
And so that's why I'm kind of, you know, not willing to let go of those pieces is because I think that those words equitable, even though we could look it up in the definition, it, it just, sometimes maybe the word equal is equated to that and that's not what it is. It's providing the resources so that our students can be successful. Some students need, well, a lot of different students need different things. So we're, we're making an attempt to provide those resources for our students that they need.
Yeah, and the way that you described that, I am fully supportive of. I, I mean, we keep coming back to the action step things, trying to understand the intent, Barb, and I'm really sorry because I know we're not debating that, but that is how this stuff has come to be. And like, one of the action steps that came up was, um, let me find it here real quick. All right, right here. Measure success with more than just standard tests. Review scores with a DEI lens. Consider multiple factors of students' abilities. That gives me pause for concern. That's the intent that's used to create these result statements. Me, I interpret that as um, lowering, lowering the achievement bar. And so when you described what you previously described, I'm fully supportive of that. And I, and if that is the agreed upon direction for equity, I can get on board with that. But if it's not that and it's something else, then I struggle with that. And, and that's where I have trouble getting on board um, with my support.
So if I could, could we all nod in agreement that we are, the rest of us are in support with the, the way Kelly described equity? Is that how people, is that the way that we, when we, when we're talking about the term in this document? Is, is that what people? Okay. So being on the record, we're very clear about what we're meaning by it. I don't, I don't think anyone, well, I don't want to speak for anyone, but I'm going to say I, I don't think that, um, if the interpretation of what you read is something that would mean lowering the bar, I think that, I know that I would not want it to be in that direction. So I think they were in agreement, but that's not.
Yeah, no, I, I'll just speak for all of you. I know that none of you are asking to lower the bar. So I, so that's not it. This is about, I don't know. It's about making sure that everyone has the opportunity to.
And that's, that's where they are.
High expectations, high support. That's what, that's what this is about. So. Yep.
Okay.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Director Peterson.
This is for Barb. What you explained to Ryan, can you just second that to me? I have no idea, you know, what comes after six months, a year, two years.
Sure.
Okay. So this is helpful, what you told Ryan. So I'm just going to ask for it one more time specifically to me. These action plans and the research and what this group wants to see as a result of their strategy are just that. Their handwritten, their typed out thoughts. These are not things that can be acted on.
Well, there might be some things that are acted on. So the idea is for, they are giving us their recommendations for what they would, they believe is going to give us this result. As an administrative team, as a board, we say this is the result. What, you know, let's refer to this, see if there's some good ideas and resources for us to determine what it is that we want to do to achieve this result. We may not go after all, we're not going to be able to go after all of this at once. So we're going to start in certain ways and we're going to get, you know, started setting some goals, make, you know, taking some steps in that direction. Um, but we have constant conversation about this. We have it study sessions. We have it through our goal setting. So, um, I, I, and I'm really sorry. I don't have another way to explain.
Something perfect in there. Thanks. Okay, we will define, cultivate and celebrate excellence in men, in the many ways it is embodied in our diverse Zephyr community. I'm looking for head nods. Modem Media Public Schools has definitions for individual, school and district level excellence. Modern Media Public Schools has systems that cultivate motivation, growth and personal excellence for all students. Modern Media Public Schools has programs to identify and celebrate excellence in meaningful ways with the Zephyr community.
Oh. So Alice has been writing as we go so that she's captured all the things that we were talking about in terms of changes, so that when we ask move forward with this, we have the changes somewhat recorded.
But you know what I'm going to say? Director Peterson. Barb, you know what I'm going to say?
Yep. You want to rearrange.
I want to rearrange them.
Okay. And so, and if I understand, I'm just, because it's 10:30, here's what I'm going to summarize what you've told me. Is that you talked about wanting to let the community know that one of the main things that we really need to be doing is fostering trust and partnership among staff, staff, the students, families and community members. And you want, when the, the community reads left to right, they see that trust is up towards the front of, of what it is we need to work on. You want it right after academics. You want the, the community to say, yes, we're working on academics and you are, we're going to work on trust as well. And that was one of the things that you asked, just when we print it and send it out for the first time, that people read that.
Not if everyone else is good with that. Oh, okay. Paul, I gotta see a head nod because we got a split over here.
Yes, I agree. And I just want to point out it's 11:30 where I am, if that means anything.
Okay, for all the ones that we've had, all guests had nods, can we vote on, or make that be the?
I would like to continue the discussion and talk about why. I mean, I understand how important relationships are and partnerships. And to me, this feels like the, let's push the inclusive, equitable educational system to the back and hope that nobody reads it. That's really what this is about.
Can it be third?
Based on the philosophy of let's move this up because we think it's more important, pushes the other ones down is less important. So just by having that philosophy is sending that message to the community by that's saying that we say this is more important. So therefore these others are less important. So I'm fine with the order they're in. I'm not sure how they landed in this order. I don't think it matters the order they're in. They're all part of the plan. They're all part of something we're working on. But if you're going to use that philosophy to say this one should be next because it's more important than others, it's saying. I don't think we want to start trying to rank these things at 10:30 or 11:30 at night. And I don't think we'll ever get agreement.
Do we have to be in agreement? No, I mean, take that up separately.
Well, that's why I want to go to the why. Like, that's why I want to hear from you about like the why, because we're, we're opening a huge can of worms now if we're going to start rank ordering them.
My why is because we've spent the last school year trying to do community outreach, involvement. This was 100 community members. And then just to throw it back, if it doesn't matter, then why does it matter if we move them around?
All the ones that we had agreement on, and then if somebody wants to take that up as a separate piece, that's.
Make it a circle.
It's a star, like the star person and we, each one has a prong in the star.
Hmm. Oh. Okay. Rumpert, Alice.
Organizationally, I put this grid together to make it more simple for us to reference. So I would be happy, just as Superintendent Dufferin just shared, when we package this, put it all together, I'd be happy to update the board at a study session and share like how we're communicating out the plan and show how we're packaging everything together, if that would help the board.
Up with something other than just a rectangle.
Yes, I do.
Is it possible to almost table that piece of the discussion and require it as part of reports is communicated out in public that we're in agreement? Or that it gets put to a vote or something to that extent? That we don't have to debate it tonight?
And we can see what options Alice has?
Yeah, I suppose, um, so once we vote on this, typically we would let the community know right away that we have, right, that we've approved. So, um, I suppose that, well, it's, it's out there on, I don't know, I don't know. It's out, it is out.
I would like to let the community know and share our slide deck and the video. So that's, that's what I would recommend we go forward with after tonight. And then, um, I'm happy to come back and talk about how we communicate out the plan after today.
For example, we've talked before about, for some of you who I've met with, I've shown you examples of how other districts have, have their strategic plan online and in a very different format than just, you know, reading it all at once, breaking it down. So there are opportunities that we can use and we still have branding to talk about and we do have to, we do have to finish that. Now, the branding, once we get to that and the website redesign, I just, I think there are a number of ways that we can communicate it out. But it to, we had, we do have this PowerPoint that we've already talked through and is public right now too. So to go back to this, are we able to talk through all the updates that we have right now? All the ones that we've just discussed, see where we are so that we can, and then we can, to Director Domon's point, come back and talk about the formatting of the strategic plan as a document. Which is kind of what you're talking about is how we format this. Not as one document, maybe as multiple pages.
I would be supportive of that.
Coming back to that part in the future. Okay. Could we walk through this and talk about the changes that you have documented for us?
So we'll start with Strategy Three. So I'm, I'm numbering them across so we know organizationally, when we talk about it, just as we go through these edits, so you know. So Strategy Three, we've changed the wording of the actual strategy. We've deleted ensure and replaced with support. So now the strategy reads, we will support the social and emotional wellbeing of students and staff with an emphasis on mental wellness. Strategy One, Result Statement One, we worked on incorporating literacy, math and science. Now the result statement reads, systems at Modem Media Public Schools exist to support a strong academic foundation for all students with an emphasis on literacy, math and science. Strategy One, Result Statement Two, incorporating define. But so the result statement now reads, Modem Media Public Schools have systems that define, cultivate and build agency. Modem Media Public Schools has systems that define, cultivate and build agency. Strategy Two, Result Statement Three, we worked on the removal of the word employees. The result statement now reads, staff at Modem Media Public Schools are culturally responsive and more closely represent the racial, ethnic diversity of our student population. Are the edits that I have to the result statements and strategies.
Strategy Three, number two, had a change that added and with parent partnership. Right, we have Modem Media Public Schools has systems in place, sorry, to support emergency, I'm sorry, emerging health issues and trends in the district in partnership with families. Does that sound right? I mean, Public Schools has, well, we got rid of the mental wellness team, but we just changed it to Modem Media Public Schools has systems in place to support emerging mental health. Was it emerging mental health issues and trends or just emerging, emerging mental health trends?
Uh, sorry about that. Um, Modem Media Public Schools has systems in place to support emerging mental health issues and trends in the district in partnership with families.
I thought we removed the word issues and, or changed it out.
Oh, to characteristics. Oh, yeah, we talked about it. Would it be, but would it be okay to just have in place to support emerging mental health trends?
Oh, yes.
Go straight to trends and get rid of issues altogether?
I like that.
Strategy Three, Two will read, Modem Media Public Schools has systems in place to support emerging mental health trends in the district in partnership with families.
That is. So what we're asking for this evening with these edits, we're asking for your. what we're asking for this evening with these edits. We're asking for your support to move forward the strategic plan, mission and objectives as updated, the updated version, and also the strategic plan, strategies and result statements as updated through this conversation.
Director Peterson. Can you clarify then, our last conversation we had, we had forehead nods to rearrange and nothing happened. So just, I want to know exactly what we're doing about that.
And so, okay, and so what I heard in the conversation then is that we would come back to with some ideas about how it would be that we would display, communicate, package the strategic plan in a way. Yeah, in a different way, I guess, instead of
Just due to time because it's late?
Well, and because it might take some design. I mean, like I joked about the circle, but I'm not joking about the circle, too, because I can tell you that there are a number, I can picture a district that has their strategies around in a circle around something. So to show that they I don't know, they all support what it is we're after for kids. They have all the strategies around. So I'm not, I mean, I think there's an opportunity to be able to do that and then, yeah, move forward.
I move approval.
Moved by Director Payne.
Second.
Second by Director Regan. Discussion. We haven't talked enough.
Is this the time we get to discuss it?
I want to thank everyone. I really appreciate the thoughtful conversation and I appreciate how much the community put into this. Tonight was our turn to to put into it and and also have edits. So I I hope that everyone feels like it was a productive process. I also really appreciate the changes that were ma made. I appreciated Kelly's comment of casting a wider net. I think that is really good on on the edit I had been concerned about. I think coming up with ways that we can be more definitive in the terms we're using in this district so that we know what the words mean that we're using because we're all then talking off of in one, we're all understanding so much we're talking. So I'm really pleased with the work that's been done. So I want to thank everyone. Are there any anyone else? Any comments? Okay, it's time to vote. Roll call, please.
Director Domon.
Aye.
Director Payne.
Aye.
Regan, aye. Director Donna.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Adam Chair.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, hang in there, everybody. This is fun. This next, this next part's super fun. It's an opportunity to check and see the work that's been done on branding and the logo and and I am just going to suggest Ms. Soifert that those things that we've discussed and had agreement on around the brand architecture. You can just, you know, say, you know, maybe go a little more quickly through those. All right. Thank you. I'm going to share this with the group. Go ahead. You go ahead.
Okay, so with this presentation, I'll talk about the school board role, a little bit about branding, talking out about the process, and then I will be brief in the brand architecture and and then review the revised logos with you tonight. So the school board role in branding to review the branding process and the key elements of the architecture. And then tonight I'm asking for your action on a new district logo. This is a logo that will replace what you see in the bottom left-hand corner that we refer to as the star person. I'll be really brief with this. I I think just really what I've been talking about with our branding process is elevating who we are as a district, but also being aspirational. And then that gold section on the bottom left-hand side there, a school district's brand should be approached from a strategic perspective and critical for connecting with internal and external audiences. Board members Regan and Domon were involved in this branding process. And one of the things Board Member Domon and I talked about is the importance of that consistent communication. And so I think that's really important to part of our branding. Why did this, why did this branding process happen? We had a communications audit that started this. I had a study session, conversation with you in April. It was facilitated by our partners at CISO. And then we conducted during May engagement with our community doing focus groups that included our students, even our students at OHA. And then the branding team, which was the membership included our staff who have responsibilities to exhibit brand messaging. We also had three students and one school board member there and two alumni and one of our students in the audience today was was part of our branding team as well. So they they met over three different meetings, worked on all of that stakeholder feedback, and then that's where that brand architecture came from. I I will not review all of the great things that we did hear from the focus groups. It's in the slide deck. But this is all great information that informed our work. All of these pieces, the strongest aspects of Matamidi Public Schools, this is all part of what informed that brand architecture. So this is what we talked about on June 8th. We talked about the archetype, that sage archetype that is informing a lot of our branding even right now as we're kind of developing. I shared with you on June 8th, as we're developing our website, we're looking at that. And then that brand expression, those keywords that are under those areas. So stories we tell, the words we use, how we sound. That was all developed through all of that stakeholder feedback. And then on the bottom, there is that last piece, that marketing side. So the tagline that we will be starting to use is experience excellence in our district. The other component of this is our logo. So this is the last piece for the branding process that I'm asking for the board's action on tonight. And so I shared with you these, based on our conversation on June 8th, we use that feedback to work with our artists. I'm coming up with these revised logo recommendations. So you'll see there's common things that are running through. We're using the symbol of the wrap circle around us to symbolize the community. That was a really strong piece that came through. We're also using a star and that star's placement is important because the board feedback on June 8th really helped us determine where that star placement should be and what type of star we're using. And then the feedback from the board on June 8th was that you really liked that that bottom row with the star placement in an O as well. So what's important for you to know for each of these versions is that there's three different elements underneath each version. And so they would be used in different ways in our communications tools. Board Member Donna had requested at the June 8th study session that I bring back some visualizations for you. So you see at your table spot right now are some different ways that you can see how the new logos might look on social media, like on Instagram, for example, or on, you get a little sneak peek of templates that we're working with for our website. So you can kind of see how it might look on our new website. And then letterhead was something else that was requested. So that's the that's the visualization there for you. So really, and I had shared this with the board, I'm looking for your preference on these versions, the typography that we're using, which which version you prefer and that we would move forward with. Thank you.
So the M's are different in the three different versions. So what if we like the M in version C? But the Mata Meidei Public Schools phrasing in version A.
You can make your suggestions to me and I will, I will go with whatever version or hybrid of the versions that you would like to see. So I'll point out to you just a few things. So the M in version A has a white outline that's between the gold and the navy. And the M in version B and C is the same. The difference in the type, there's a difference in the typography of version A compared. So that's that font that's underneath the logo. Version A is different from B and C are the same. And then that star placement in the O on that bottom row again, do you like A that has that darker blue background or do you like a white like you see in B and C?
Director Payne.
The place where you most often see this, this letterhead, and you don't write me that many letters, but the other place you see it oftentimes athletics, right? I mean, so it is a big piece of who we are athletically in competitions. Does our athletic and activities director have a preference on any of these as we think about? He is going to be the one probably using this more often than I ever will.
Thanks for that question. Um, so Bill can, in activities, I'll continue to use just the M. But I have shared, I did, I've been working closely with Director Forsythe and making sure all the way along the process, we've been working, conversating about this. So version A is the is the M of his preference. And that's mine as well. I'd share that as well for the board to know.
The the version A of the M?
Version A M.
But that, does that match the sports with the white?
It's the same structure.
Okay, so that's all that. And just to be clear, because I think we talked about this at the study session, we're not changing everything on athletics or anything. This is really just what you'll use on our website and social media. So there's not really a cost to changing this.
No, I think the biggest thing to think about is where star person logo is is existing. So like on our website, on our printed materials, social media, that's really what we're looking to replace. And really using the M is to bring more consistency across our district because people recognize that as us. So we just want to kind of match that consistency.
Director Regan.
So a couple of things. So thanks for some of these changes and edits since we started this process. Couple of things that I've heard from people in the community about this is, you know, people have a strong feeling about the M and we're really heavily invested in the M and activities and athletics. And and so the versions A, B, and C of the M that we're seeing today is different than what we saw at the study session. And these look very similar. I'm struggling with the I'm struggling with what's even different from our current M. I'm trying to look at my readers. I'm trying to look at because to me, they look very much the same. And I'm I'm assuming that that was, that's the intent is that they look the same so that this really doesn't make a change for most things that we're doing in the district. But what I see as a difference is like, obviously, the circle, like if we're using that for on social media or on letterhead or things like that, and the star. Am I right on that? And I guess I have a follow-up to that, but I'm just wondering if there's like different coloring or anything like that.
Yeah, thanks for that question. No, the intention was to really respect the original structure of the M. And that's what I brought back to you. The art is cleaned up a little bit from the existing M. But again, it's really to have the district distinguish itself with a logo, but that also provides consistency.
I guess here's my follow-up to that. I really like the star placement up higher where from where we saw it originally. And I think it looks really clean and nice and that we're shooting for something. And the star person is, you know, obviously a bit dated. The, in my opinion, the second star, the version B. I didn't like it as much like on this smaller drawing. It felt like there was something on the screen that I wanted to wipe off. Like, it felt like one star looked great, but the second one I was like, is there something else on there? And then the other piece, I kind of felt the same way of the star in the in the center of the O, like filling that whole O. Seems like it made sense. That's just me visually. But like the other ones, I'm like, is that centered in the O or is it too small or? So I like how it filled the O. I guess those are my 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 feedback pieces. And I guess, I guess one last thing, if it's okay. On the, when I look at these three, I don't really see that there's as far as the font or things like that, I guess I'm struggling with. I don't know that it goes that much difference. And maybe that's just me missing it. But this seems like it provide an opportunity for consistency across our athletic teams and for it as well. Like, will this be shared with teams to be able to utilize this, everything from the high school down to youth? Or where's that sharing? Where will that happen? Is it something that's shareable, I guess?
I think for the, thanks for the question. I think for what we've talked about in the past is is making it more accessible, but with like permissions and finding out like how people are going to use it, that would be, but yes, the answer to your question would be yes, we want to make it accessible. We want consistent use. Whether it's MAF, making a lawn sign and using our M or whether it's you know, a team using it as well.
Domon.
I tend to agree with Stacy a little bit. I like the M in version C and Kelly, the M in version C with the single star and without the white. I, but I do like the font in version A. Matamidi Public Schools. And to Lucy's point, it has a big impact on our athletic programs. And so if we're not going to make the effort to invest money to make the changes, I think sticking with the current M makes sense. But you guys are going to roll your eyes and laugh, but I am very passionate about our traditional M. And I would hope at some point we could give some consideration to making the change back to the traditional M logo that we had for 50 plus years. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm oh, do you go ahead? Oh, I'm the A with everyone else.
Like the A M as well or the?
It doesn't matter to me. I like the font of everything A. So the only quick, did I want to, because so what I'm hearing so far is that potentially the B C M with everything else A, right? Is that what I heard? So fun.
Because B has a second star.
Oh, right, right. Yeah. Oh, I see what you're saying. So the C, the C M. Everything else, version A, is what I've just heard so far.
All did, or Director Donna, did you have?
Oh, so wait, we have one vote for A, the M and A with the white outline. You're online in line with the athletics. Okay. And with that, so Alice Athletics, Lucy Payne, all.
Director Donna.
Yep, yep.
Director Donna.
I'm indifferent. I really it all looks it all looks good to me.
Yeah, I do want to say
Sorry.
Really good. And this helped a lot because I was having trouble envisioning that circle and it looks really good. So great job.
The question really is the white space around people have strong feelings about the white space around the M versus the the yellow around. I mean, like, is there?
Without the white right here. Oh, it does have white?
No. It's yellow. Alice, what is it current, current?
It's called, yeah.
Currently like C?
B and C.
Yeah.
Currently like B and C.
Why change it and add more colors for printing?
Well, I don't think that they won't change it, will they? Will the sports change it then? I thought we were keeping the M. I thought no one was changing the M in the athletics department.
Correct. This would be, this would replace the star person. So this, they they would continue the the rationale with version A and the art is that it helps make makes it stand out.
Oh.
And it cleans it up a little bit. But I'm happy to go forward with version C if the board likes that the best.
I personally like the M as it is and the new star and circle and the star in the middle of the M, the version A. But that's just my feeling on it, keeping the M the same. I don't notice enough difference, I guess. Maybe it's because it's 11 at night. I've looked at this multiple times. Oh, so does anyone have a strong preference on the M? If no one has a strong preference on the M, you you might want to go with what? If no one has a strong preference on the M, you, you might want to go with what?
Yeah.
Professional.
Yeah.
I have a strong preference on the star in the O. I'm in line with what Kelly said. The bigger, the one that pops out.
Yep. Because then, because everything else was, I mean, so then it's all A. What you're, because you liked everything in A except the M, but now you're saying you don't.
Fine with the M. You're fine.
So.
Version A.
Okay, I hear version A.
Thank you.
Oh, we need an approval of the brand architecture logo, version A.
Oh. Well, we've asked for, I guess, I mean, I guess we can go without.
I'll make motion.
There you go.
Moved by Director Payne. Seconded by Director Domon. Roll call vote, please. Discussion, any discussion?
Was the motion for version A?
We're there already. You're, now you're just voting.
Okay, that, that's what I wanted to know. I wasn't sure what we were voting.
It was a guess. There was a motion for version A. I'll start again. Director Domon.
Aye.
Director Payne.
Aye.
Director Regan.
Aye.
Director Donna.
Aye.
Director Peterson.
Aye.
Adam Chair.
Aye. Motion carries.
Adam Chair.
Director Payne.
I'd like to make a motion to table the rest of the agenda till July and adjourn. One motion to do both, please.
Moved by Director Payne, seconded by Director Domon.
Oh, I move to table the rest of the agenda of the July meeting and adjourn both. One thing, done.
Second.
Seconded by.
Domon. All those, oh, roll call though.
Director Domon.
Aye.
Director Payne.
Aye.
Director Regan.
Aye.
Director Donna.
Aye.
Director Peterson.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye, we are adjourned.